Okay, fiscal year 20 budget hearing. Work session on March 23rd, 8:00 AM Saturday. In attendance is the full Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee members, Bethel, Pennell, Condren, and Mish, and Chamberlain, along with the Chief Administrative Officer. And we're going to proceed to the first appointment for today, which is an 8:00 AM appointment with the Board of Health.
Morning, Mr. Joel, come on up.
Morning.
Young lady, how are you today?
He only hired you, not me.
Yeah.
We have three requests that you level fund our budget for next year. That we request 750 more for our clerical part-time secretary. Right now she works like 4.7 hours.
Yep.
We'd like to maybe increase that to six. We have a lot of things for her to do. She's quite efficient, but we do need her for at least a couple more hours. We'd like her for 10 hours a week, but we don't want to be a pig about it, so 1.2 would be enough. And that we're going to talk with the selectmen at a later date about Tom's position because he will be leaving and we're going to have to probably make it attractive, make maybe a full-time position. Tom? Want to talk about that?
This is probably the last time I'll be in front of this August board because it is my intention to leave in the fall and the intention is based upon finding a suitable replacement. The position is becoming more demanding, the new food code in particular, as well as reconstruction, there's a higher demand on my time emergency dispensing sites, tobacco control, variety of things that are going up in the community as population increases and health developments with the attendant problems. So the board has decided that, and I concur, that the position needs to move from 26 hours to 35 hours. It is my intention to stay, however, until we find a suitable replacement. I would not be the board shorthanded. Any questions?
Do you have a rough idea when?
Yes, it'll be fall.
Fall.
Yes, it's my anniversary date. We have enough time to start doing some outreach for candidates. And in addition, one of the ideas that we're tossing around is that when it becomes full fine, I believe fiscal year begins July 1, I would still be, I would still be part-time until the new position is filled, but with the accrued savings from those nine hours over those intermittent, intervening months, I would be able to mentor and train the new employee, my successor. And it wouldn't cost any extra, any extra money because I'd be saving nine hours a week for the time. In addition, we have, the board has increased fees after having no fees increases for about 25 years. We have gone from last year's $19,369 to this year's permit fees to $45,000. So that increase would certainly more than support the initial hours as well as the fact that the new person is starting out.
So how many years of service should we be thanking your board?
That'll be on the certificate.
Twenty-two.
No, not long.
Well, twenty-two for this position, but Sue and I actually sued the first week. Worth it again in 1981, yeah, but in part-time.
Didn't know you were that old. Thank you for all your service. You're that old.
Well, I am, in your eyes indeed, it definitely.
Oh, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've had some reliable, reliable activity from the board and we went through a lot of different things when I was on there, tobacco, smoking.
He was well-earned.
Okay, thanks.
Did a big contribution, did a lot for the board.
Yeah.
And you still do?
New Title V that happened when we were on there, which is a big difference in terms of.
So it looks like they basically moved their numbers around to cover the secretary.
Put in the, in the ground.
Compared to earlier years.
Yeah, which is fine, I mean, we figured we'd cover anyway.
That's effective.
Thought for the hours.
Talk about when we meet with them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but that's what it looks like they did it.
Any questions for us?
Yeah, we were just talking about moving money around to, you know, cover the additional things.
Looks like you guys already did that on your, you moved some numbers here and there, right?
Yes, but the, the position, the hours.
No, no, that's different.
That's a difference, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But yes.
Yeah. Yeah, Sue, the board in the discussions, you know, I know we've kind of threw this out a few times before, look at a regional approach for inspector, you know, where it would be shared with another community.
We talked about it and I think Tom, you seem that did a little research and talked to somebody about it, who's done it in the past.
I think.
I've actually reached, reached out to quite a few.
Yep.
Board of Health, Ag One, Westfield.
Yep.
The Hill Towns.
Right.
And all I've hit were walls, you know. They all think it's a great idea, but nobody has any extra time for anybody.
Well, again, yeah, and I would add that even if the case, the people I spoke to, they said even if that was going through, they would still, they would still want to have a full-time person.
Right.
Because of demands, because they're all in the same business.
Yeah, they can't even fill their positions.
It's getting harder and harder with more regulations.
I just didn't know if we could cobble with a smaller community and, you know, and maybe look for grant funding, you know, like we have for some positions in the past, for the first three years, you know, stuff like that.
What we were nicely told was.
Like Southwick, are you looking for us to be with a larger town, a smaller town, like a creative town in that area?
Normally it'd be with a smaller community because Southwick's growing and, you know, and Tom has explained to us the, the growing workload here, but there might be a smaller community that, you know, needs just a little of assistance and, I mean, there might be some grant funding out there to, because the Commonwealth is pushing regional approach to everything, whether it be schools, fire districts, 911, I mean, the regional approach is, is, is the end thing.
Well, yeah, I'm just commenting that, Tommy May, and I'm a colleague on one of our committees that is a planner and works in the Berkshire Board of Health Association and works out of Pittsfield, and they have a regional setup for some programs. We had a discussion about that was one of the ways of reaching out. And when I asked her for more efficient, she said, "Well, it's better service, but it's more expensive."
Okay, yeah.
So it could actually, actually cost more.
Okay.
To have a regional, at least in her experience, it is.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, no, I know.
Just throwing it out there.
Absolutely.
You know, looking at all options.
Absolutely.
It's not getting any easier, so we're looking at all options.
But as I said, the board's changing the fee structure really has, you know, substantially more money two and a half times this year. You know, we did have a little bit of a spike because of the golf course, but there's other subdivisions on the horizon and, you know, I think that's still going to continue.
Yeah.
It just won't be quite the spike we had, but the other fees will have increased as well, and they're going to stay the same like the food service permits. They're gonna, they were boosted every year, they're going to remain that way.
Yeah.
So.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say there's probably other new things coming down the line at the Board of Health that we'll probably have to have some input or responsibility for.
Yes, especially as a, as a state starts to pull back and give us more responsibility because they're.
Pass it on to the work with a lot.
And DPH for that matter, they both have issues with their budgets and personnel to assist us. We used to have a lot more assistance at the state level, it starts, it starts, they're pulling back.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep, no, thank you.
Are you sure?
Thank you.
Quick question about those new subdivisions that are going in. Does the planning board require them to pay for the, the developers to pay for the things like septic, sewer, septic testing and all of that kind of stuff, perk tests and that?
Yes, yes.
We did, so.
That was part of, that was part of the increase in fees and so on. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
We have Community Preservation Committee.
All right. We have Chris.
Community Preservation Committee.
I wasn't aware that we were coming, but here I am anyway.
We're glad you're prepared.
I don't know we have a budget, so I don't know what we want to talk about.
Well, you have your usual admin budget.
Right, yeah, right, admin budget which comes out of the funds.
Right, and I think one of the things there is a certain amount of that admin budget is going toward the open space planning project right now, and then they'll, they'll be able to imagine.
How it is is just before conservation.
The same 5% for the upcoming hearing you're going to be having or your upcoming budget.
Yeah, you're going to have that.
All right.
Because that would help the committee that Dennis and Russ are on subsidize their operations because the open space plan has got to be completed and filed by November.
We need to steal some of your money.
We need that open space plan.
We need it for every.
Secure funding through E.
Right, you have to have it to qualify for other grants.
Right, exactly.
Because they require them.
That's our C one, so it's important.
Right, so that's why it's an important thing.
Absolutely.
So when you convene, when you convene your next meeting and you go through issues that are going to be put on that agenda, you want to make sure that that admin function vote is put on there as well as your normal reservation of fundings for all the different categories and then whatever projects people are coming before you with for applications.
Right, we did just get a question from our Stuart Sager asking if we're going to be joining the Coalition this year because I guess we have not yet joined that, was built in January.
Well, I think what you can do is when you have your meeting, your next meeting, that's a, that's.
It was on the last agenda, but somehow we didn't get to it.
That's not a budget line item, that's an admin expense out of your admin account.
You know, since everything's out, the other thing's coming out of admin, I want to make sure that there's.
Well, our, our town attorney's been speaking to Stuart quite a bit.
Good, yeah.
So you'd be doing that issue and then you have, you have other applications I know coming in front of you.
Yeah.
Right, there's the school ice skate or something.
Oh, that's, that was.
That only came in.
Right, well, they have to have Joe sign off as the chairman of the Board of Selectmen of the town because the school is a tenant of the town.
Right.
And, and the school in the town is a landlord of the school district. So just like you have other people signing applications for other types of permits that come before your other boards, I believe Mr. Beatty's going to be having to sign that before it goes to the planning board.
Well, we'll see about that. I don't know if that's that easy. Stamp it like every other thing.
You don't have a stamp?
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, where's the stamp?
Yeah, not that.
Understood.
Do you have a date for your next meeting for the time you have?
All right. Constellation.
Here I am again.
Hey. This one we actually have a line on.
You're quick.
Morning, I'd like to apologize, I didn't get my hearing agent this morning, I have a little trouble hearing, so if you could just speak up a little bit, I appreciate it.
We're, we're cutting your budget, Dennis.
You hear that?
More money, gotta get my hearing agent.
Yeah, more money. That's good, we say no, you say yes. He's happy.
Yeah.
And he doesn't know what happens, so he gets in the car.
That's a good meeting.
Absolutely. So what's going on? What do you got?
Okay, so we are asking actually for a little bit of an increase in Dennis's budget, five hours per week due to associated costs with new development.
So that's one of our.
A couple of new subdivisions coming in, the one on College Highway and one on Hillside Road is going to be coming in this year too. You know, a lot of my time is out in the field, I don't have enough time to get out there and do all the site visits. Luckily, the commissioners have been going to bat for me and doing some of the site visits. Just up here on 61 and 63 College Highway, that problem has been going on all year and it's going to get worse if we don't do something because it never had a stormwater plan, it never got the proper permits, so now it's in conservation's hands because it's going across the street into the wetlands. So now we're in charge of doing the cease and desist.
And forest conditions.
Making sure the steel fences are in proper order. They put them up, but they're blown in the breeze, so we have to go out there and inspect them.
That's the cell towers up there?
No. Two houses off of Nicholson Hill Road that are.
Right across from.
College Highway, just past Nicholson Hill.
Yeah.
Right across from the museum.
Hey, Chris, following up on like Tommy's earlier conversation with the Board of Health that done an examination of their fee structure as revenue offsets within the last year or two, when was the last time the conservation undertook that type of a process? Because the last time I looked at your revolving accounting fee stuff, it had gone from a high of $36,000 down to $18,000. So it is something, right now with the rate of expenditure you're doing with also subsidizing Genie as the secretary, if you're contemplating extra hours, you really should be examining your entire fee schedule and modernizing it so that you could see what that would look like as a revenue offset.
Compared with other towns, maybe, to see what they're getting for.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, that, that would be a worthwhile exercise.
Every town after a while.
Similar to what the Board of Health had just finished, so that if we could see if we could just keep this like, you know, neutral in the budget process.
That's a great idea.
It's a great idea. Double thumbs up.
So same, same question I asked Tom was, is the planning board hitting the developers for the extra work that you're doing dollar-wise for?
Not for our board.
Not for your board, not for marking out wetlands and stuff like that?
They pay a fee structure when they come in, we have the state fees, the local fees, and.
They do pay application fees?
If we needed a review done on it, they would have to pay for that, any kind of extra review.
But not only that, the cost of legal ads have gone up because people don't realize you're taking in.
They pay for the legal ads.
Right, well, in other boards, we, we end up paying for them and then we just pass that cost along to people.
It's just it costs more for it to run through the town, it's a lot easier if they just pay for themselves.
Yeah.
Saves the whole process and we don't have to go chasing people around.
That's also the thing that the, I mean, that's built into the, the special permits and whatever in there when they, when they build, I mean, to be paying out those extra things like wetland declarations and stuff like that.
Somebody just gave me a list of impact fees that other towns are doing when a subdivision comes in, they pay impact fees for different things that they cost the town money for, so I don't know if that's something you probably want to look into, if other towns are doing it, impact fees.
Well, that wasn't allowed in Massachusetts for the longest time.
It is now.
And I know, and I know the Board of Health has had, I mean, the planning board has had discussions with previous town councils about.
It would be the first town to do it, there's quite a few of them out there now.
Yeah.
That might be another great option.
Well, I think that's coming, I think it is emerging as an allowable thing, but again, that's something the planning board has to look at with the.
The commissioners have been talking about a drone for quite a while because that would make our inspections a lot easier also for the lakes, for the docks, if you have a drone fly out and do dock inspections even in the winter, you know, where you can't get on the ice.
And even wetland areas where you're walking through pricker bushes to check on things might be easier, accessible with a drone than.
We realize it would make more sense instead of just the commission getting their own drone because the police wanted, the fire wanted, every other department we've talked to is interested in having drone services, so we would like to be part of that.
It wouldn't be unique, there's a lot of other towns that use drones. At the Association Conservation Commissioners meeting last year, they had a specific seminar just on drone use, legalities and what they're used for and, you know, the benefits of the town. A lot of towns have them just for the commission, but as Dennis and Chris said, we're looking to kind of share that with the other towns, I just think it would make like a lot easier.
I think there has been interest from other departments, Dennis?
Every department we talked to.
Everyone wants one, absolutely.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so we're talking about shared costs, that's a perfect example of sharing some costs.
It sure is.
Robert Rogers from the Police Department is the one that's spearheading this, I believe. He knows the most about it, researched the laws and, and the drones themselves.
Yeah, wonderful.
Has there been any effort to look at a comprehensive drone use policy? In other words, there's other communities that have drones apparently, and I'm sure there's some pretty serious concerns about how they're used properly or possibly improperly and the extent to which different departments would utilize them.
Right.
Has anybody looked into that? Are you thinking of something to look into?
When you talk to Landis, he'll, he'll have a lot more on that because the laws are changing as we speak and he's up to date on what is the newest laws and what's allowed, what's not allowed, upcoming legislation that might be in the works.
And then users will require training.
Yeah, it's a lot less stringent than you would actually think and, you know, the, the privacy laws and drone use are very blurred at this point, particularly if it's a private use drone versus a commercial drone. And the towns that I talked to, they're licensed under private use because it's all volunteer work, no one's getting paid for it, so they don't have to get a commercial license for them. I'm not sure.
No one's getting paid to operate it?
It's a little different for the.
Remember that, Dennis.
For the service, it'll be a lot different for the police.
Everybody, David would be.
Oh, David would be, okay.
At the MMA conference, I talked to him for the past couple of years, and the big cost, believe it or not, is not the drone, it's the licensing.
Really?
That's the most expensive part. The booklet for a, a community is like that thick, you know, and they, they will tell you, drones, you know, we can afford drones, it's, it's the licensing for a municipality.
Other towns aren't doing it with their inspections, or Springfield has a drone, I know there's other towns, and it doesn't surprise me if there'd be more paperwork involved in the actual work itself.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Chockers.
Of course. State of Massachusetts, yeah.
Are you looking at any grants or anything for those?
Absolutely, we're going to look at any, any grants and anything possible, but I figure if we all work together, all the departments work together, we have a much better shot at getting a $15,000 drone rather than getting a $5,000 drone that doesn't have all the bells and whistles and everything that we need.
Wonderful. Anything else?
No, I, I think we've already discussed some of the, the budgeting situations we had like at the Sofinowski Preserve, that money is now coming out of the proper account.
Correct.
Okay, now when.
And you're not charging for the mowing of the fields.
Okay, and, and that's the same with our other preserves, you know, is there any arrangements with any of the Lupinski or Granville Gorge or?
We do pay for trash pickup and we go through the same people that do the, the town boat ramps and the park and rec people.
All right.
If they have volunteers, it's great, but you can't rely on it when you get a big pile of trash out there and nobody goes to pick it up.
Yeah, yeah.
Doesn't look.
Especially like after a high school party or sometimes.
Yeah, yeah.
Like especially the gorge.
Now, now that, the money that it's coming out of now for the mowing, is, is that a limited amount of money or is that an annual fee?
That was money that was granted to us by the state through the NRCS.
Yeah.
When we lost our secretaries, somehow the monies instead of coming out of that account came out of the maintenance account.
Okay.
But we still have money left over that shouldn't have, wouldn't have been there, but it's in our account and we can spend it for field maintenance, it's not for mowing, it's for maintenance of the perimeters of invasive species and low downs and things like that.
Okay.
That's what we'll pay for, not the actual mowing. Mowing is going to be a wash, they're not going to charge, they're not going to pay for the mowing itself.
Yeah, I, and again, not to be repetitive, but, you know, people are paying to mow for the hay that the commission might want to consider in the future, looking for proposals from other people in agriculture that were, are looking to mow and that would actually pay.
We haven't been able to find anybody, but a few here, if anybody, that'll be.
Yeah, absolutely.
There is a lot of expensing occurred with gas and.
Yeah, I, I.
Or lives and field.
I realize that.
Machine breaks down and right there.
Yeah, I realize that, but there are a lot of people that do pay for.
It ain't a lot of people, but so far we haven't seen that.
Are you going to be able to apply for that federal pass-through money again from the state that, is that program still running?
No.
So it's not running anymore?
That, that for municipalities, unfortunately.
So once that, that pool of dollars you're drawing from is gone, you'll have to figure out another way to accommodate that issue as you.
Hopefully they will come up with another grant eventually if they get some money back in that account.
Okay, operations here, reimbursement, cellphone, travel expenses, what's that?
I don't, and that's applied to the cellphone or a car, so I use my own vehicle with my own cellphone.
Okay. Travel.
That's similar to the Board of Health inspector.
Got it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Counsel and agent.
Counsel and agent. I saw her, wasn't she there?
Who's that? Morning.
Good morning.
Good job. So you have my budget in front of you?
Yep.
I don't have a copy of it, but I know what's on it. Basically, my priorities in the senior center are the health and fitness of my seniors, so that's why I asked for a little increase in the exercise line item. I had decreased it this year to $2 a class for my seniors instead of $3, and I've gotten a lot more seniors coming into the senior center, that $1 has made a huge difference. And do you want to talk about the staff person, is that on there or?
Well, right.
That's for the kitchen.
The kitchen, yeah.
Right. We, we did do an increase in midstream, not to violate any policies that, or agreements we had with the Finance Committee, but it was through grant funding and the individual knew that it could be canceled at any time.
Correct.
But, you know, obviously there's an increased need that we've established, and a matter of fact, there is another additional issue going on about hours that Cindy, myself, the board has designated me and, and the CAO are working on, and Cindy has tried to make some adjustments to temporarily help, help with that situation.
And that's for afternoon activities.
Afternoon activities.
Afternoon activities.
And we do have some people that feel strongly about an additional four to six hours, so.
A day?
No, it'd be three days, I think it's three days, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Two hours each day.
So I think her budget request, you know, I'd like to kind of keep it open until we've had a chance to, to work on that issue. Did I cover her?
No, that is correct.
Okay, all right.
Is correct.
And I don't mean to be evasive, I'm just.
No, no, my formula grant funding was increased from the state from $10.50 to $12 a senior. There's 1,984 seniors in Southwick right now, so that increased my formula grant that comes from the state, which is why I, and I had to start that July 1st, I couldn't wait until now and then kind of backfill it, so that's why I kind of made the proposal to call on the select board to.
We use it for extra hours for the kitchen.
Right, so I increased the hours for the kitchen, Denise is going to be doing some extra things in the kitchen and adding a program of crafts, which is very popular, twice a month.
Because what happens.
Give her the time.
You end up having seniors, they're not just coming in for a little bit early for lunch, they're coming in a lot early now and they're having coffee and donuts in the morning.
They're there first thing in the morning, yeah.
Right, so, so this is an issue to make sure that we're, we're having some point of presence with supervisory staff for seniors and elderly coming in downstairs because when they're on our premises, you need to be watching, you need to be responsible.
Great, and I strongly feel like a COA staff person needs to be present instead of just someone in the building.
Right.
Based on the activities.
How's the new van?
The new van is fabulous, it's parked outside, hope everyone got a chance to see it. It came like a month ago, I drove it several times, we tested the wheelchair ramp.
Mrs. Pendleton volunteered? Mrs. Pendleton volunteered?
We had a.
So we had a full, a full beta test on it, you know, make sure it all worked.
And when she kinda flipped backwards, I pulled over and secured her even more, which was great. She didn't flip completely backwards, but her wheels went up, so we knew that it was not correct.
She's doing well.
Yeah, good, she is, good. They, they drove it to Palmer, it's been to Chicopee, so the seniors seem to really like it. It'll have the graphics put on it, a meeting with the gentleman from Spot Lake Printing on Tuesday, so it's wonderful.
And you've got the seals, right?
The seals they have, they're gonna incorporate them into the design. So it's, we have a lot going on in the senior center, it's always changing.
So what'll happen, so what'll happen is Bob Johnson is just finalizing the adjustments for the garage retrofit on it. You know, 'cause we have to go up a brick course or two to fit it in with another door panel, but that's known 'cause you know, at the end of the day, you got almost an eighty thousand dollar vehicle through a grant for nothing, so you gotta do some retrofits on the garage, so there's a net.
Are we gonna go up enough bricks to get the next van in in twenty years, or are we just gonna go up enough to clear this van?
No, I think.
A wider van, you know, lower and wider.
Yeah.
You can't, they don't make them like that.
Humvee.
Yeah.
Well.
No, I understand we're going up, we're taking one or two out, but is it enough for the future van?
But this is something Cindy, this is something Cindy researched. If you go to a different size, you're gonna be tripping C D L licenses.
Right, he means go up in the garage.
Yeah, but no, even the size of the van.
All I'm saying is apparently the van is a van is a van until you buy one and it's three inches taller. So in ten or fifteen years when we buy another van, it'll be, everybody, three inches taller. So I just wanna make sure when you do our brick work for ten thousand dollars, we don't do this again in fifteen years because some moron didn't think we should go up another, as you call it, course or corset. That's all I'm getting at, so while we're in there, do we need to go a foot or just enough to clear the van? That's all. Just wanna do it twice. Again, and again, and again.
Yeah, I had a lot of suggestions of deplating the tires.
Oh yeah, low profile, baggage, yeah.
To fit, and I couldn't get the wheelchair, which was a requirement of the grant, 'cause I did try to do it the other way, but it was a requirement.
Yeah, you had to have, you had to have a wheelchair in the unit.
Yeah, no, it's a win-win.
It is.
'Cause you would've got another van for a good ten years.
I know, I was so happy, I, I know, it would be on my budget forever.
Which is good, because now, now that's something we take off our capital list.
Yes, I think it's great.
Yeah, it's a win-win. Okay.
So, I mean, the senior center is always changing, there's always things going on, I'm always adding new programs, so, but I try not to do that with the term budget.
How many sign up for your exercise class?
Um, it depends on the exercise, like Zumba's become very popular, so my, I budget seven to ten seniors. I try to go seven, hoping for ten.
Right.
And we've had like twelve or thirteen in some classes, some classes have twenty, so it's kinda getting a little tight in there. It real, yoga's very popular, Zumba's very popular, line dancing, yoga dancing not so much, it hasn't really caught on yet. Tap dancing was a request, so I tried it, there was only five people in it.
Lot of hips there, I don't know.
Yeah, so they requested it, I try to do whatever class people want to do, but it just comes down to funding and.
Right.
Figuring out for the next year what's gonna work.
And they're all two bucks a person?
They're all two dollars except for swimming, they go down to swimming at Wilderness Experience, and that's fifteen dollars and it used to be twenty-five dollars for, for five classes. I might have to increase that 'cause that class is a little bit low. So it really depends on the class, aerobics isn't always popular, but I've heard some pretty things about the two dollars. It's quite amazing when you just take a dollar off of what people are paying, it means they can take an extra class during the week or two, so they.
Class every night?
There's, we have classes every day.
Every day?
Yep. Couple, sometimes there's a couple of classes, we're busy from eight till, you know.
Quite, these are, Russ wanted me to ask all these questions, he just felt embarrassed to ask, he's getting up there. So I'm just, I'm trying to just help him out.
He's eligible to get out.
Yeah, he's, he's el, he's getting close, closer than anyone in the room.
Oh no, he's past close.
Right, right.
Thank you, Mr. Didi.
Just trying to help you out, two bucks.
It's okay, they're, they're good questions, 'cause I think people think what we do is serve lunch and that is not.
Coffee and lunch is all I see there.
At all during the day.
For now.
It's quite busy, there's hardly any parking sometimes when we have things going on.
Yes, I see that.
So that can become an issue, but I try to work that out, try not to schedule too many things on the same day. I just never know week to week what class is really gonna be popular, it kind of depends. It's a walk-in, so they don't have to sign up in advance, 'cause I don't want people to pay for something that they can't come to. If they're not feeling well or they have a doctor's appointment, I don't want them to.
Just like their meals, have you noticed certain meals?
Yes.
On your monthly calendar, when Highland Valley says this is what their meal is gonna be for this day.
Yankee pot roast.
Exactly, you, you get a big enrollment on certain days of the week depending upon what the menu choices.
And who's cooking in Highland Valley, like they just switch cooks, so the numbers go down.
Really?
You can tell by the presentation of the meal what's gonna happen. So Highland Valley has been changing a lot of things, so that's kinda affected our numbers a little bit.
Do you find him showing up to eat lunch here then versus having it delivered or?
That, those are two different programs, yeah.
Two different deals, okay.
Meals on Wheels is approved by Highland Valley.
All right.
And those are, those are supposed to be strictly homebound people.
Sorry, Russ, homebound, okay.
So, yeah, we can't deliver that to you, and those are, those are compacted.
Isn't March, isn't March homebound meal, doesn't that happen in March?
It could be, yeah, March or April maybe.
Well, I think some people oughta deliver some meals, I've done it before, I think it would be good.
Well, we are low on drivers, if anyone knows, anyone who wants to volunteer to drive, we need volunteer drivers for our new van and for Meals on Wheels. It's just they kinda cycle in and out.
Yeah.
To keep them fit.
Do you want us to promote that through the news media with an article or?
Sure, I have been doing that as well, but sometimes it catches people's eyes and sometimes it doesn't.
Okay.
Our Meals on Wheels drivers get a reimbursement for mileage 'cause they use their own vehicles, and that's through the formula grant and the Highland Valley grant.
My wife used to deliver meals for a while.
Yes, she did, yeah, I haven't seen her in a while.
The only concern she ever had was delivering a meal and having a dog answer the door.
Well.
And that's a true story because.
We have a specialist here.
I know.
I assured her, she wasn't the only one with the concern.
So when we're aware of that, we do try to tell them to put their dogs in another area, because we can't just drop the meal off and go, we actually physically have to see the person that's part of the.
It's like a wellness check.
Right, part of the program is a wellness check, so if they don't, if they go to a doctor's appointment, don't tell us, it's a process to find them before we send the police there to literally knock down the door, we try not to do that.
You're gonna make sure you account for their.
Yes, we have to make sure that we know where they are, they're not inside.
Yeah, are you still working on that program with the fire department about the entrance, the key thing?
The what?
You mean the knock boxes?
Right.
Like we have in commercial buildings, they were doing signage.
We do.
The signage. I thought maybe it was Russ Anderson had mentioned it at some point.
Key access.
He wants a key access to Rosewood, so I'm gonna be working with him on that in the spring when we try to do the signs up there.
Okay.
There are certain areas that he has mentioned he needs a key access to, make it easier for them. So I told him I would be happy to help him talk to people about that.
Right.
And we, we are starting a new program, I just wrote a grant for a collaboration with the school with him. Actually, the friends group wrote the grant to get a simulated stove to help prevent fires and educate seniors and school children about that.
Excellent.
Where's the driving, I saw something about driving school, did that already happen?
There's a driving school, April twenty-third, it's not a actual driving test, it's a.
You have some upset seniors.
Yeah, it's a, um, it's A R P is sponsoring, well, not really sponsoring it, they're hosting it here. And I called Chief Bishop and asked him if he wanted to help pay for it, and he said yes, which was great, which means our seniors will be able to do it for free, 'cause if they had to pay for a class that taught them about the new rules of the road and technology, it hasn't gone over very well in other communities.
Right.
But he's putting some money in and so am I out of my gift account, and we already have thirteen people signed up for the class. Other communities have had zero people interested in it, so I think it's because it's free.
Right.
And I'm kind of enticing my drivers to do it, telling them they really need to take that course.
Oh, it's a win-win.
Be able to drive, so.
They might wanna put a little emphasis on using a left-hand turning lane because Southwick now has that. And there seems to be a little confusion with a lot of people on that left-hand turning.
I don't think that's just seniors, but.
No, I'm not, no, I wasn't, I'm, I'm just saying that.
You know, if you know how to use it, it works great.
It works great, I did have the police come in when that first happened.
I know that, yeah.
They did a presentation.
Right.
But that will be in the course as well, I did ask her about that to add that kinda to the course description.
Yeah.
But that, the lanes are very challenging.
Yeah, those and dogs, yeah, two things.
There's always something.
Only one will bite you though.
Cindy, thank you for the great job you and your staff do.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Economic development.
Economic development.
I can tell you as a former economic development commissioner.
How's it going?
That they are doing the, probably the best they can, considering their budget and the fact that we're in competition with many other communities, but I, I think they do an overall good job. They're working with the Chamber of Commerce, so I think their budget is about five hundred dollars and.
It covers his advertising stuff, yeah.
Right, yeah. I, I think that I would certainly support, you know, continuing that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Cemetery commissioner?
Cemetery.
And we have a commissioner. Mrs. Connolly.
Sharon won't be able to make it, so. I got everything at the first of last minute, so. I don't have a copy of it, except on my phone that she just sent me, and it's sideways, so.
We have a copy, must we just give her a copy?
Yep, yep, yep.
I'll look on the jet. Hold on a minute, I'll give you a copy.
I don't keep my phone like that and read it sideways. I know we made a lot of requests for stuff because of, thank you. Looking to make some improvements down there.
Yep.
Looking to finish off with the trees because we've had a lot of dead ones.
Absolutely.
Flag that, we've gotta continue with that. The roads are in terrible shape, we actually had them come in and look and got a quote from Lane on doing it and stuff, and I think that was included somewhere, if not, it's in our, our paperwork. We need to increase the size of the cemetery, so when we have the surveyors come in to do that, we want them to do the whole cemetery so that when we have a survey, we can enter it into the Ponto software, so we can get that up and running so that people can go into the Ponto software, put in who they wanna find in the cemetery and find it themselves instead of going to the town hall or going somewhere else or calling us to try to find somebody in the cemetery. It's the new cemetery we're starting with, of course, first, because we've got to increase the size of it on the surveying. So we wanna get that all, the whole thing done at once rather than have to come back twice to do it. And that way there, we can enter it into the Ponto software through them. Somebody can go into the website, through the, through the Southwick website and put in, you know, somebody they're looking for in the cemetery and it'll tell them where it is in the cemetery, so that that person can go find the grave or, you know, like that. So, I mean, it's a little ways off because we've gotta get the information into the Ponto too. That's one of the things we had in there too is powers for that, because it's a very time-consuming thing 'cause they have to go back through all the records and enter in all that information. Some of it was done a while ago, but it's, you know, they're trying to keep up to date. We've had a couple of decent secretaries that really tried to get the new stuff in there, so it's the old stuff that we gotta get in. The trees, oh, the surveillance system, we have quotes and stuff on the surveillance system because we've had many things taken from the cemetery, and we, and it's a shame, they've taken stuff off of graves and that stuff and it can't happen, it can't happen. We are looking at getting an electronic fence that opens and shuts at certain times, plus cameras, because we find that most of the stuff is getting taken during the day. So we have a bulletin stuff on surveillance systems and that's, the price is in there, and the electronic fence where it can be timed to open and shut at certain times of the day so that they can't get in. And that would be the only fencing, it would be that one. There's also the cost of putting electrical in for that from the building, so that's included in there too. Let's see, the trees and replacing some of the trees, what we're looking at to replace it with are the trees where the roots go straight down. It's a certain brand of tree, you know, type of tree where the roots go straight down, so it won't go, you know, through the cemetery and stuff like that, it'll go straight down. Those are the trees we're looking at, I think there's a little bit of salary increase in here. Grave openings, the subcontractor raised their price, so of course we're raising our price on the.
Right, now Sharon just submitted a fee schedule increase.
Okay, yeah.
So that, that has come into the board within the last week or two and it is a marked up agenda item for next Tuesday evening.
So we're increasing that also on our end because we have to cover that cost.
Right, at, at the very least, you're gonna pass those costs.
Right, right, and we also, I don't know if this is, but we also looked at other towns and they, for burials on the weekends, they charge extra afternoon time on Saturday, so we started doing that too. So that Bud and Bobby and those guys don't have to work Saturdays, you know, until two, three o'clock in the afternoon, because if they bury them before noon time, it's a standard fee, if they bury them after noon time, there's an additional fee. And the funeral policy said everybody does that. So we started doing that to, you know, offset Bud's cost, you know, for being there and stuff like that, and hopefully making it so that, you know, it's only a half a day for somebody like that rather than a full day. So that was done, I think that was done last.
Last summer?
Yeah, last summer on that, so when we found out that. So we got the camera, they're surveying, of course, ground supplies and stuff like that that we need to have. Supplies, minor equipment like weed whackers and leaf blowers, you know, 'cause they only last for so long. We update them, you know, we try to cycle them so that, like, there's like one a year or something like that, so it doesn't go anywhere. The replacement and rest of the removal of the trees and the paving of the roads and fixing of the roads, and of course.
Now, this is all the new cemetery.
Yeah, yes, this is all the new cemetery. We also have some things for the old cemetery, which will include some of the trees cutting down. We also have someone, and it's so far been a volunteer, but we are going to add a little bit for the old cemetery because Gene Thro is doing some great, a great job cleaning it and stuff. In fact, we just found a water container that we can put at the back of the old cemetery and get it filled up, and he can work off of that because he needs water to clean the, clean the stoves.
Grave stones.
And we're also looking at doing these cement footings for, you know, the ones that are falling in and stuff like that in the old cemetery, so that's in there too.
But that's gonna be a separate application to the community preservation.
Right, right, we're gonna do that for that because it's all, all that stuff. But it's, it's gonna stand the stones up there sinking, it's gonna help do that, the.
So there was a report, did you guys get the cemetery?
Yeah.
There's a whole report, there was an arborist that came in and then somebody else who evaluated the condition of the old historical gravestones of the town, and this is to restore them, make them right and rehabilitate them, which is a permissible use.
We're gonna also look to, look to the committees and the, like, the Lions Club and the Rodeo Club and the like for bodies to volunteer to help do that, we, you know, get going on it too. But with Gene, he'll go, you know, when he's got time, he'll go and that stuff, so this big, you know, I don't know if you've seen him, those plastic containers, the big huge ones, and, you know, we just have to find, you know, take a hose and fill it up or something, or, you know, approach the fire department and say, hey, Monday night when you're doing your drill, can you swing by and make sure that's full of water? You know, you know, weekly or monthly or something like that, so, but it's nice because it'll stay there. It'll be, you can chain it to a tree or something, I mean, if it's full of water, you're, they're not gonna be able to move it anyway unless they have a forklift or something, so. But we wanna have that there so that the water is accessible to do the cleaning of the old stone.
How many gallons were you thinking that?
I think it's.
I think it's two hundred gallons.
So that's what you're dealing, pounds a gallon or something?
Yeah, that, nobody's gonna move it.
I think it's in a metal, I've seen him, I think it's in like a metal cage, it's almost like the ones they use for zapping trees now.
Yeah.
Fertilizers.
Well, I think these were used for like liquids, like things, the soda or something like that, where Jim, Jim Bahe found them. They were used for liquid soda and stuff like that, 'cause you don't want the fertilizer, you know, you don't want that type of thing there, but the soda and stuff, you can miss it out. So, yeah, that would look at that.
Didn't C P C just approve forty thousand dollars for Gene?
Correct, for two years.
So that's, that's probably what it is.
Well, they, they're gonna recommend.
In principle, right, in principle, they have to submit an application, but, but yes.
Right, it's gonna, it's gonna be an agenda item at some point as an application, and it will, like all other C P C votes, it'll be a standalone warrant article, it will have its article, its motion and what fund source it comes out, because that would be under the historical one.
Yeah.
So that's why there has been discussions between C P C members, you know, as well as the historical commission and cemetery.
I had one other question, you talked about surveying, is that like a perimeter or is that actually locating, locating graves?
Yeah, because we're almost out in the back section, so we've got the section to the left and it's not been surveyed to lay it out.
Oh, I see.
So we gotta survey, yes, it's a layout of the, of the plots, plot layout, I should say, so this way here, you know, we don't have other issues.
Now, when those plots are laid out, are they, are they laid out for like individuals or is it one of those things where the plot is sized where it can accommodate?
I'm not exactly sure.
It can accommodate multiple members of a family.
Well, we, well, we, I think what they do is they lay it out, and then we do it, like, there's some that are two plots, some that are three, some that are six. You know, I don't think they go as many as six anymore, but they used to have six, because, you know, I have a six.
Yeah, I, I've heard.
But now with cremations and stuff, you can do, like, if you have a two plot, you can actually do four. You can do two bodies and two cremations.
Yeah, you kind of hurry up because I'm not feeling well. Why, did you buy, did you buy your plot? Not yet, no, I was waiting for, for survey.
Price has gone up, Terry. You better grab it.
Yeah, you better grab it at the.
Where do you want your ashes?
Mine's on the side, though. Actually, I.
Skiing lake.
Unfortunately.
Where, coming up to Michigan?
Okay, I think that's everything.
Ronnie, if, if, if money's become an issue, did you prioritize what things you would like to do first?
There's numbers next to it, but I don't let that really matter down here.
Okay, I mean, are the.
One, two, three, I don't know if it's just the numbers or.
Yes.
Their surveying, their surveying has is a must, is actually a must.
Okay.
Yeah, surveying is a must.
Yep.
The electrical, I would say, is a must, you know, the, the cameras and the fence.
Yep.
I would put those there, and then the trees, you know, the tree replacement could go down the list.
Okay.
And then the road would come after that.
And can the road be done in sections?
The road probably can be done in sections. I don't think it was, it, we were actually shocked at how low the price was on the road.
Yeah.
What we had from Lane, so. But there is one section that's really bad, so that would probably be the section we, you know, want to do first.
Yeah.
I know they looked at the wall part that comes down the hill there.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that would end up on top of the graves. And I think they said it's okay for now, but that one there is, is not the greatest either, so the wall is not.
It's okay.
Yep.
So, it might be way to short.
Have that as part of a revolving fund, amazing, part of a great sale in the cemetery, perpetual care, yada, yada.
All right.
But, yeah, that would be, you know, like I said, the survey could be the, you know, top thing.
Top priority.
Because running out, unfortunately.
I think, thank you.
Yeah, anybody got questions, Don?
I think it's, you know, it's still a small budget. It's bigger than we usually have, but it's still a small budget, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, right.
Building inspector, come on down.
Art, thank you. I didn't get back to you. I just got your voicemail last night. I'm still learning on this phone, and, but thank you for getting back to me. And we probably will need that information.
Okay, I'll clear whenever you want. I'll make copies and send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I thought you had something.
No, I have, I have it up there.
Oh, there you go.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Because break time starts in a minute. I'll make this brief. As brief as you'll let me. Not much has changed in the, the regular budget. A couple of items there. I'm requesting an additional five hundred dollars in the vehicle maintenance section.
What are you saying?
I'm saying that, that police vehicle I got is a very expensive vehicle, but it just needs a lot of work. It's great. I love it. Thank you very much. But it costs a little bit to maintain it.
Yeah, it does.
It's been rode hard. I won't say it was put away, but they did take good care of it. But.
Understood.
It's a hundred and forty thousand hard miles.
Is that an SUV or a?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no more Crown Vics, Arthur.
It's over.
They're all, they're all.
The end of an era.
They're called interceptors, but they're really like a variation of an Explorer.
Right, yeah.
And, and, and quite frankly, they're just costing a lot more, they're costing more money than the Crown.
There are no Crown Vic, yeah, the Crown Vic was a much better vehicle.
Because Randy, Randy had one of those interceptors, and, you know, and after Joe doing all the transition work to prep it and so forth, and that was several thousand, then it was going to be three thousand for a new engine that we just moved him into a auto allowance. So, it's cheaper. And so, that's why we haven't been able to, and, and we have another pool car out here we have to replace, so we ended up approving a third unmarked for the police department.
I heard PVTA is going to increase service and stuff.
Well, you know.
I'll bet we work out for the building inspector. I need to go at two o'clock on Tuesday.
Every couple of years, we have undertaken a fixed route transit study in our community, and it's never been a feasible thing to do it.
Oh, no, I don't.
But I did notice in town, believe it or not.
And you can't get it over the bridge anyway.
Three Uber drivers this past week.
Really?
They're here.
Three. But that blue light, you see how blue that blue is? I thought one was a cop.
Right, would that, yeah, I mean, literally did. Well, they had no, a blue, like.
This blue reflective something that when you look in your mirror, that is blue, blue. That's police blue. That's not like, oh, is that a taxi? That's like, am I, is that unmarked? Am I getting pulled over? But I couldn't believe it because I.
All different, I saw all different cars, little cars.
So, that, so they're, I didn't know they were saturating this market.
Oh, oh, yeah. Well, when you see three in one week in Southwick, I think obviously somebody's using, you know, so.
Well, now you don't have to go out up to Westfield on certain days.
Thank you very much, Mr. Steinhardt.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to be a fly in a waffle for that.
Since the driverless cars aren't here.
See, I was just worried about dogs. Now I got to worry about something else. My life.
Yeah, but realistically, you're better off with the dogs, so. Okay.
Okay, the other additional item, you know, I want to cut into your break time.
You're fine, sir. You, you take your time, sir.
We're fine.
Take your time. Great. The other item I'm asking for two hundred dollars more in conference and travel because I've been fortunate enough to get a two hundred dollar scholarship for the last three years for a two-day training by the Southeastern Massachusetts Building Officials Association. They run a big seminar the last two days in the southeast inside 128 there. But they've been generous enough to give me a scholarship because I didn't believe I had it in the budget. But I think that generosity is wearing thin. Three years in a row. So, that's the extra two hundred dollars there. And those are the only changes in the regular budget down at the bottom for operations and capital items. The I-Plan table is the piece of paper that I passed out, in case anybody hasn't ever seen one. It's a, a big monitor, basically, mounted on a, a table that I can use instead of a drafting board to look at full-size drawings, because we're taking electronic drawings now with the e-permitting program. I need something that'll allow me to read the darn things instead of trying to see them on my little monitor and playing with up and down arrows.
Can your, your office would accommodate this?
Yes, there's plenty of room in there.
Okay, just want to, we want to make sure that if it's acquired, that we're not having to deal with other office setup issues.
Right, yeah, I've talked to Jim about it. He said that he believes the computer I have can run that particular monitor without a problem. There will be some additional wiring to get to it and those kind of things, but it's all in the cost there.
Well, you know where to get a building permit.
Well, yeah.
Would, would any other commission or board?
Get a benefit?
Benefit from this?
Sure, anybody could come up and use it. It'll be right in my office.
Like fire, looking at fire plans?
Yes, if you want, the chief wanted to redo them. You know, that's a real great idea. We could do a concurrent review, look at them together.
Do you know, I was at a, I was at a personnel conference in the fall, and there was all different types of new executives, like there was some new chiefs there, new fire chiefs, and different chiefs. And one of the things is the, I think, some town on the South Shore, the fire department in this community keeps, kept an officer in the town hall in the building department because of code issues and inspections. Because just like he has developed a relationship with our fire department on many issues of commonality for inspections, and they go out as a team, and then they're, they're meeting their individual jurisdiction requirements under the law and regulations, that they've done that, and it's amazing partnership. So, that's why there may be the ability for him to be able to have these tools, and then fire can come over, you know, their inspector.
Right.
You know, can come over and also participate and do plan review with him at this location.
I mean, we get a live feed from the drone. You have that on the big screen?
Did you put in for a drone?
Well, we are going to find out the connection between the buildings.
My input to the survey that went around, I think Dennis, or no, I'm sorry. Lieutenant Landis was asking for inputs from all the other departments about uses you could do for it. It'd be great for roof inspections or unregistered vehicles, that kind of thing. I'm not looking specifically at you, Joel.
You're not, and you're not getting a drone, so, so we're both on the same goddamn table, just so we understand each other.
The, the other thing Arthur's.
I got plates on everything. The stickers might not be good, but I got plates.
The other thing Arthur's engaged in, in looking at in, in our behalf is the new draft report that came in on the building, assessment of all the five municipal buildings.
Are we getting autographed copies of those?
We, I have a draft copy this year.
Autographed, I want it autographed. It's worth more.
From who?
Whoever.
Well.
It's a book signing.
Don't you want the final slide?
I don't want to read that.
Anyway, so he's engaged in also reviewing this work product, and at some point there'll be meetings, you know, about it.
Of course there will.
Because this is, as, as Mr. Fox articulated to town meeting the other evening, there are a lot of other pressing issues that the town needs that will need to have a prioritization, a plan, a schedule, and resources programmed to those categories of expenses so that we can maintain our buildings and never put ourselves in a position of a debt exclusion.
Sounds like a funeral. Sounds like a funeral right there, doesn't it?
Well, when, when Mr. Steinhardt mentioned some of the issues that they've discovered in the dollar figures to fix them.
It was wild.
Is, is unbelievable.
Yeah.
Unbelievable.
The fire station is actually the biggest emergency.
Some of the things that were done in the past are going to come back to haunt us.
Every one of these projects.
I just going to say that.
A town project built by the lowest bidder. Nothing would shock me.
Well.
And in those days, we didn't have the benefit of like what newer modern construction practices would require, like when the schools, they had a clerk of the works or, or an oldest project manager.
Right.
Well, you'd do all that now if you were.
Yeah, but you did then.
But it, it just was not the norm.
Here's the keys. Oh, thanks.
It was not the norm.
Yeah. Well, thank God you have new sheriffs in town to make sure that won't happen again.
Okay, Arthur, the other thing you have here is cell phone.
Yeah, that's.
What do we do now? What do we do now for you? It's, do you get a stipend?
No, this is not a change to town spending at all. It's just a, a transfer. It used to be in one big budget, I guess, combined with police department and everybody, and the town just paid it. I didn't have a line item in my budget, and this year I was asked to put it in there.
Oh, by the town account?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that's what it is. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming out.
You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Russ. It's great to be here.
We appreciate you being here.
Doing a break? Do the break?
No, that's it. We were asking you. You're the chairman.
Just maybe a five-minute break?
I'm tired.
We got one tired. We need a five-minute break.
Okay, five-minute break. Go.
Okay, budget work session, reconvening. It's nine fifteen. And the Southwick Emergency Management Agency is the department that is now presenting their proposed budget.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning, sir. How are you today?
I am doing excellent. I've been here since nineteen ninety-two. And I see some familiar faces. And I am pleased to be, once again, putting forward our budget. So, it's pretty much the same as previous years with the salaries are, cost of living increase. And I don't, I don't think there should be any problems with, you know, the pre-level funded, the five percent of the department increase. There has been a significant, not significant, but a small increase for my two assistant directors. First off, let me introduce Eric Carroll. He's our communications radio officer.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Very dedicated. And I have two assistant directors, Key Stromgren and Charles Darrow. Under emergency management operations, vehicle maintenance, we have two vehicles. We have three trailers, a generators, and a masked communications and lighting facility. We do most, all our own maintenance, unless it's real heavy maintenance. We're getting ready to work on several of the generators as far as filter changes, oil filter, air changes, lubrication. So, we're able to keep well under budget, but we might have unforeseen situation. We did have a military pickup truck that was never put on the road, and so that is not part of our fleet anymore. I guess it's going to go up for auction or dispersal by the town.
Right, it's, it's something on the DPW grounds that have to be purged of all this excess surplus equipment, so we're going through that exercise now.
Um, internet, cell phone service are about the same. We have, do have a reduction in, let's see, well. The cell phone internet vehicle maintenance is not much of a change there. Education, we've had several of the education opportunities canceled due to weather. And it's something that we don't know what comes up during the year. Very fortunate that a lot of this is paid for by FEMA or by state emergency management. And there are other facilities or other training opportunities, but the problem we have is our members work during the day, and they can't afford to take time off to go to some of these opportunities that might be out of the area or during working hours. So, it's a hit and miss situation whether we can take advantage of what is offered. Insurance and dues, we belong to the Western Mass Auxiliary Police Association. And that is, well, we do get a lot of training, and our dues and insurance for our members are through that organization. And so far, that has remained the same, but how long it'll continue that way, I don't know. Uniforms, with uniforms, we have emergency management, auxiliary police, the community emergency response team, and the Radio Amateur Civil Emergency Service. And each one has their specific different uniforms that have to be addressed. Now, with the auxiliary police, I have several members, several personnel that are interested in being appointed, and I do get a lot of applicants. They come from, unfortunately, outside of our political jurisdiction. And I do not, will not take anybody that's outside of Southwick because they can go to their own community, Agwam or West Springfield or Westfield, to join their auxiliary force. But I do have a lot of applicants coming in from Simmsbury, Southfield, and Granby, Connecticut. And what they want to do is they want a free ride to go to the academy, and once they go to the academy. want a free ride to go to the academy, and once they go to the academy, then they get appointed to either East Hartford or West Hartford or, or elsewhere, or West Springfield. I just had an applicant that came in and we were ready to start getting him, ready to go to the academy, and all of a sudden he decided he went with infield auxiliary police. So, it's a, a problem that we have, volunteer, the volunteer people are just not out there, the economy's doing good, everybody's working, we haven't had any major disasters like Snowtober or anything recently here affecting us, and not until you do, and then all of a sudden you get a lot of people that wanna come in and assist, and then after the event's over, they're gone. So, the stability, we have right now seven members that are very dedicated, and we've lost one, we lost Bob Miller, who was a World War II vet, he was up in age, but he was just as dedicated and he did a lot of work for us on outreach for applicants. I do have several applicants right now that we're addressing, so, I can't tell you, you know, whether we're going to have somebody that's going to come in, and I'd like to have a force of ten, but to get people to volunteer, and the fire department's a good example there, trying to get people to come in and stay, that are really dedicated, devoted to the town, so, it's a challenge that we have. So, as far as uniforms go, I, I have to have something there that if somebody comes in, we're ready to get them outfitted and ready to go. Conference and travel, fortunately, we're able to use the pool cars, we do a lot of training with national weather, Eastern Mass, and there's a lot of training situations that I've not been able to attend due to a, a family situation here, my wife is not doing too well, so, you know, my dedication is to her first, and then, we have training opportunities that we'd like to take advantage of, and it's just, you have to address it on a daily situation, whether you can do it or not. Radio maintenance, that's pretty much the same, the only thing we have that we've got to coordinate with police and fire and DPW, so that with the EOC, the alternate EOC and the mobile communications vehicle, we have frequency coordination and capabilities for all the departments, and if at such a time the departments decide to go to digital P twenty-five transmissions, then we have to be able to accommodate that under the FEMA and state guidelines, so that we have capability of communications for them. So, that there's up in the air, I don't know, you know, I can't say what's going to happen in next year or the year after, some of the communities have been going digital, some of those have, some are happy, some are not happy, so it's determined by the department heads, so, we have to be able to accommodate them. Minor equipment, so far, that's office supplies and minor items that we need to buy, and I'm happy with what we've had over the past years. Auxiliary police ammunition, they've qualified, range qualified, we take them out twice a year, and they're nine millimeter, forty, forty-five caliber, they supply their own weapons, we supply the ammunition and the targets, and fortunately, I have two ranges on my property that we use, and I'm taking the insurance liability for that, we don't have to rent any ranges, and when we're available, we use the arm of instructors through the police department for qualifications.
Charlie, have you talked to Lieutenant Landis, who's working on the sighting of a new firing range in town?
I brought it up, I mentioned to him that I would offer, you know, what we have, I have used my land for qualifications for those.
No, no, he has land, we've already got a land, we've already got arrangements, we got easements into it, it's town land, we already have it lined up, what I'm asking you is if you need access to something, you could be speaking to him-
Yes.
-to make sure that whatever auxiliary officers you have to have qualified can also participate along with Southwood Police at this new location that they've set up.
We, we have in the past, it's been a, a good, you know, handshake, I've afforded the range to them that need, you know, one or two officers that need to qualify that have missed, and in the past, we've, our officers have worked with the, the regulars for qualification, but I was not aware that the town-
We just began working on it, Charlie, but, we, we don't want you to have any liability issues, we'd rather that take place on town property.
Right.
Well, my neighbors are happy, I haven't had any problems with any of that.
Yeah, we're not, we're-
There's no need for that anymore, along with the initiative the police have, are just finishing.
Right.
Okay, great, thank you. Now, we get into the goodies here. The last three years, I've requested a low-power AM radio station, FCC license, and this would afford communications outward to all departments' use, to notify the public that we have road closures, or beach closures, or lake closures, or directions for like the National Motocross, and it would complement the sign that we have down at the Chris Mill Plaza by the mobile station, but most important, and recently, in, back in December, you recall, we lost nine-one-one communications, it was for a day, it was interrupting, and it was nationwide. Along the same time period, the newspaper medias got hit by some internet hacking and lost their able, their capability of publishing, and that was Los Angeles, Chicago, Miami Herald, Baltimore, the New York Times, and they were not able to print and deliver coordinated delivery of their newspapers because they got hacked internet-wise. Recently, well, Verizon lost the internet capability one of the other mornings, Facebook and Instagram went down, and what I'm getting leading up to is we are very vulnerable in putting all our eggs in one basket. One of the things were, this last winter when it got cold, there was a concern for natural gas, the ability to provide enough pressure for natural gas. All our eggs are in one basket now that we're eliminating the nuclear plants, the coal-fired generating plants, and those plants that are online or on grid are the common denominator of natural gas. We lose the natural gas, we lose our power grid. We do get power from Niagara Falls, from Nova Scotia, the coal-fired gas in Nova Scotia, and some local hydro electric. So, the concern is if we lose communications, we lose power, the last resort, we have a common denominator, and every one of us has a motor vehicle, and we have motor vehicles and AM radio. An example here is the National Parks Springfield Armory has a station on the air seventeen to ten kilohertz, and they get directions on, and events and timing, and the same thing would happen here, we had Snowtober, the only access we have to the public was a cardboard sign out here in the highway. So, the wildfires in California, the flooding, any major disaster, they have a lot of communities, a lot of counties have the AM capability of putting on a signal, and this would be twenty-four seven, and it would be for all departments here, police department, lost child, or there's a lot of break-ins, or vehicle break-ins, house break-ins, or, Board of Health, if there's immunization, or we have major events, what would not be able to be broadcast would be music and advertising, it is very strict with the requirements for public safety information outlet. I've talked to several vendors, and just recently I got a vendor that went down to almost thirteen thousand one hundred and ninety dollars, roughly about fourteen thousand dollars, I put in for twenty thousand. So, I'm asking you to seriously consider this as an outreach to the public for all hazards, and we had Congamon Road, well, we're still in the process of having that, notification could be given to people accessing Congamon Road or, or alternate routes, we'll be doing North College Highway coming up in a couple of years or so, we had Feeding Hills Road, that was a mess, that could have been helping people coming in from outside the community or within the community if the roads are closed, or if there's, say, line striping or paving of a road, notification could be done, even graduation dates for the high school, you know, the information could be saying that you might expect a delay or what have you, but it's an information that would be at no cost, I would be doing a lot of the engineering of it, I have a commercial broadcast license, so, I can cut the cost there, and I've expressed that in previous years, so this is my third year, and I have one vendor that is grateful to work for us under public safety, so, if you have any questions with that, there's two frequencies available, that would be sixteen twenty and sixteen thirty on the high end of the AM dial, but everybody does have a car radio, worst-case scenario, they would have information that they could receive from our town government. We are in a situation where there is no more space at the DPW, and they do not have the capability of raising dump trucks or working on vehicles that have a high, high heightened or beds or the payloaders, or if you have to lift something, the roof in the DPW is very low, and in the winter or in bad weather, they have to either work on it outside or not do their job. We're also out of space, I'm looking for, speaking for DPW and emergency management. An addition of forty-five by seventy, yeah.
Eighty-seven five?
Forty-five by seventy-three, and that is on the backside, it's open space by the old Blue Boy candle shop, between the salt shed and the main building, it would be just like a carport or a truckport, where it would be high enough that it'd been covered so that they could take and put the grader or backhoes or, and they're getting additional vehicles, we're really tight, we can squeeze in a little bit more, but where we squeeze in, I don't think it would help with poor situation. But, there's talk about wanting to relocate the DPW, there was a building study going on, I don't have the full information on it, but I have, you know, some of the facts, and trying to work with, get along with, you know, DPW and emergency management, and all of us have a job to do, and we've had vehicles that, if they're out in the snow or snowed in or ice or what have you, they're not available, especially with diesels, they have to have a plug-in heater, or you're not going to start them, or you'll have much difficulty starting them. Okay, now, another situation at the DPW garage, and this is a, I would say, a safety concern. We have, we've had a, one incident where a pole was taken down on College Highway, loss of power, but this didn't happen where they had to go out at night, and if you go into that garage at night, you're, it's going to be a safety hazard, somebody's gonna get hurt or killed, vehicles are gonna get damaged, because every vehicle's in there like a sardine. Try to do that, you can't open the doors because they're manual, you can't open them, don't get me wrong, but now you're working in complete darkness and trying to back out safely some of these vehicles in total darkness.
I'll, I'll stop you there, we've been looking at a generator for there, the ball might have been dropped in the past few months due to some other issues, but we are-
We have the resources locked up.
Yeah, we are, we have the money almost there, so, I would say within the year, hopefully you will see a generator over there, we're on the same page with that, just-
This, this number you have here, Charlie, this includes what sizing of a unit does it to?
Well-
Just give me the number.
Yeah.
Twenty thousand KW?
Uh, it's, it's three phase-
Just a number.
I can't, and I, and I can't because, what are you going to do, are you going, there's several things, it's lighting, it's the overhead doors-
Right.
And the heating, the heating is, is critical, because you don't want that building to freeze up with pipes, you know, and-
I believe we're gonna size it correctly, we're not, I'm not looking to put a little one in there, just open a door.
Let me give you an example, this one's a hundred seventy-five right here, right?
Right.
And I think police and fire are like two twenty-five or whatever.
Right.
So, it's a straightforward exercise by an electrical engineer to figure out what the load is, to carry all the vital parts of a, the building and the pumps, the gasoline pumps and all that-
That's the issue, right, right.
Lights, right, so, all of that's a straightforward formula, somebody arrives at a number, and then you just make sure you're gonna size the, the unit correctly, you're gonna figure out its fuel source, and then you're gonna figure out whether it's a manual or it's automatic transfer switch, all of those things, you know, people buy generators for their homes now, the automatic ones all the time, so, it's a straightforward exercise, I know Bob Johnson said people come out and look at all the buildings for that, and we were just trying to decide at one point whether we were gonna repurpose what was over at police and fire, but I think that, that location that you're talking about doesn't need anything near as large as what police and fire are right now.
And that's, that's correct, everyone.
Right.
So, so, the resources are there, so, we're good, we don't need to, you don't need to sell it.
This time and next year, if that isn't in, you can, if, if I'm, if I'm even sitting here, you can scold the hell out of me, all right? Cause I would have hoped by then it is in, we've been looking at it.
I hope you will, too.
Well, still a few more weeks.
So, any questions that you have?
No, we're good.
I, I just had one quick one, I promise it's quick, the seven hundred and eighteen dollars internet, is that like mobile for an air card or something like that?
Okay, yes.
Okay, that's all I need, sir, thank you.
And that, that can go anywhere, can go in any of the vehicles-
Got it.
Yeah, that's good.
With a computer.
You need it.
That has worked out exceptionally well.
We were just trying to see if it was a separate-
Yeah, another-
Hardwired Comcast connection somewhere that we don't know about.
We wanna make sure, is this something that stands alone from other IT stuff we're doing right now?
And that we use over at the National Motocross.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, we have the, the national weather radar-
Right on there, yep.
-with us, and-
Yep, we're just making sure that's what it was, it wasn't some other point of entry to this-
That we didn't know about.
Yeah.
We're trying to get all that harnessed again.
Cyber, cyber security into the area, so, we're implementing stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
No, we got cultural council.
Cultural council.
Jeez, you know, you're passing up cultural council for the police? What kind of person are you?
Then we got buildings and grounds.
Holy smokes!
There's a bunch of screwing up.
Susan, I, I apologize on behalf of the town.
Good morning. I don't have a lot of details.
Doesn't say much, it just says, uh-
That's okay. It's twenty-five hundred bucks.
Went up a hundred and twenty, yeah.
Twenty-four hundred.
You're good.
All set.
Yeah.
I don't have anything.
No questions? I have twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, we have our show, we have a calendar twenty-eight for two thousand nineteen, but we're, you know, what we're putting in the budget now is for two thousand and twenty, which is- But we're, you know, what we're putting in the budget now is for two thousand and twenty, which is the two-hundred-fiftieth, so-
Correct.
We plan to continue. The other item on our head was staging, which we did last year. Apparently, they don't like the wheels on the staging, so-
Who's "they"?
The park and rec, the staging that we, the portable staging, we have two sets of portable staging.
Yeah.
It lives at Wally Park for, well, cultural council's been kind of partnering with Rotary for the summertime concert series. And apparently, they don't like the wheels. Where the staging lives in the, in a shed at Wally Park, apparently the wheels are kind of, kind of wimpy, so-
Oh.
We might want to buy new casters and do the art show.
We've got some younger park and rec people that can lift things, one of the others.
Casters, wheels, yeah.
Wheels, casters.
That's what we got.
When's your deadlines for your grants, when people apply for them?
October fifteenth, or thereabouts, depending on when the fifteenth stops. If it's a Sunday, then it's October sixteenth, but, yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
Was the cultural council, you know, because we're talking next fiscal period, looking for any, thought of any additional monies because of the two-hundred-and-fiftieth?
We tried that last year, and it didn't, didn't fly.
No, I just thought because of the two-hundred-and-fiftieth.
Two-hundred-and-fiftieth, yeah, we got it on our radar to, you know, possibly do something additional, but I think what we probably would do, based on fast experience, is just go directly and say, hey, we want to do such and such. But as far as our, our actual budget, probably not. We'll be happy with just the line item for the art show, and we'll be good. If there's a specific event, we'd probably go to you guys directly, rather than add it. Because we don't really have anything that specific yet. We were thinking about doing a paint and SIP, but that usually pays for itself, yeah.
I bet it does.
But no, we do not have a specific two-hundred-and-fiftieth event planned just yet.
You would still have time to get into next year's budget-
Yes.
You know, because it'll go the whole year, and it doesn't finish until November.
It's going to bridge, it's going to bridge two fiscal years.
Yeah.
If you guys were brainstorming and thought about something you wanted to do-
We are, but we have not really solidified anything yet, but April twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth is this year's-
Tractor rally, the art show.
Tractor rally is the same day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that'll draw more people to town, you know?
I think so.
It's nice, I went to the tractor rally, too, last year, it's nice.
In the art show, you get, you get both.
Well, yeah, you go to the art show every year, but the tractor rally was-
You get both. The reception, of course, which you are all invited to, is on Friday.
Right.
We, last year, what we did is we pared it down and didn't have quite as much of a feedback, so, you know, it worked, you know, pretty well.
Yeah, it was less congested.
Less congested, yeah, it's not going to be a buffet.
Well, you just cut out the cops, you know, those cops are big eaters.
Well, no, yeah.
No, that's where the extras go, though, they, yeah.
They wanted ice cream.
I didn't want an ice cream, and the ice cream didn't show.
I don't think it's showing this year, either.
Maybe we have an ice-
No, it's just a real busy weekend for me.
Tractor rally, but anyway, that's all, that's how I got it, it's basically art show.
Well, thank you.
So, let me know.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Building and ground.
Building and grounds.
And, you know, of course, Bobby's budget, just as a few line items and a bunch of different budgets, so-
Yeah, but this is-
Important thing you have in front of you is that big Italian boss, though, right, Bob?
Right.
Yeah.
They got sections of it.
Yeah, we may have to alter kind of doing more stuff there right off than we thought. But that's okay, and I think we can, because it was mostly mortar and glazing-type things.
Oh, look, he's got a copy, too.
Oh, yeah. Well, like I said, I just got it, I got it Thursday at three o'clock, so it's-
Right.
But I think I'd give him a Capcom copy of a document, a one-sheet thing, a few weeks earlier.
Muller Report?
Pretty much.
This is just as hard, this is as hard to get as the Muller Report.
It's just the reading is kind of crossless. It does show immediate stuff, and, you know, stuff down the road-
Right.
That we got a plan for, like replacing plumbing and electrical.
Yeah, everybody's got a summary of it at their desk right here.
So, some of the things we're going to be able to do in-house with our own staff?
Yes.
And even begin to do them?
Yes. Some of the painting and-
Look, that's really the cosmetic cheaper stuff. The majority of this stuff is contracted out, and a lot of it has to be- A lot of it has to be designed. It's going to require design impermanence, just like when you do culverts and bridges and all that, it's going to all have its design impermanence. So, that's why I'm suggesting it is an important work product. Look at the synopsis you have now, and then when you're done with that, if you want to see the larger draft before the final one comes in, then by all means, contact with me, and we will loan you one. And it'll have spreadsheets.
Are we going to have a joint meeting with Ty and Bond, where those people are going to come and meet?
Yes, oh, yes, that is required.
The dog and pony.
What we're trying to do is refine the document in terms of, with the department heads, with them first, and then when they finalize it, there is a required meeting before the Selectment and the Finance Committee to make a presentation.
Is there Ty Bond involvement ongoing as we correct things and address issues? Are they involved in that, or not really?
Well, this is, I mean, really, this is more of a building assessment, so you, depending upon what you would do going forward, is-
We will probably-
You, you might have to procure, you know, an architectural firm to do something like that, because it would depend upon what the estimated value of the work is when you go to hire somebody, whether or not you can just hire the same firm that did some of the study with a peer review, because there's been some changes in the designer selection board, or whether or not, no, you're going to do a scope of services. This becomes a lot more complicated when you have to take these types of projects, because they're called vertical construction, and it triggers the designer selection board, which is a different procurement standard, as opposed to horizontal construction, where you can just go hire anybody you want, anytime you want, to do your engineering. That's why, most of the time, the town has used Ty and Bond for the bridges, and the roads, and the culverts, and all that, because that's all called horizontal construction.
Okay, so is there a dollar threshold where we enter into the Twilight Zone of bureaucratic terminology in design?
Absolutely.
What is that?
I don't, I don't have it on me right now, but there is a threshold. It's under year-round, and you get there pretty quick.
You get there pretty quick?
Yeah. You know, because everybody, you guys, I've given you sheets before the procurement thresholds, so there's a whole other chat on design, and that, just like there's a chat on what it means for doing actual construction on buildings.
Yes.
So, yeah, we have those documents that we can provide along with a copy of the report. Not an issue.
I just wonder.
Yep, nope, they do exist.
It'll probably be engineering oversight.
I can give you a perfect example, when we were partnering with Mr. Wally on the building of Wally Park, and it came time to, you know, want to make sure that the, all the buildings were built. For us to have received the land and then undertake the project would have been a lot more so. He retained ownership of it privately, had all of the vertical construction done-
Done.
Then turned it over to the town. So, that actually worked out better for us.
Much better.
So, it'd be cheap for us to temporarily sell the building?
Yes.
Repair them, then buy them back?
Right.
Right.
Go into foreclosure, maybe. They'll hire someone to come fix it up, and then resell it to us.
Okay.
Good point.
Yeah.
But that would be, to your point, that wouldn't work so much very good in humor for-
Well, of course not.
For this, but when the day comes, when it becomes time to replace a facility, DPW or something like that, that is a way to look at a project, is you buy a turnkey, sorry, you buy a completed-
Yeah.
-project, because it can get-
Like we've done before.
No, 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 no.
Not an existing tin can, I'm talking about a new, someone does all the same work-
Properly designed turnkey.
And properly built, and then you, you buy the whole thing done. Our neighboring community to the south, sorry, neighboring community to the south is doing exactly that with their DPW, so-
I will qualify that, one would have to make sure that-
It's legal in that.
That that approach is consistently with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Yeah, no, that's-
It's a good theory, though.
Yeah, I understand, thank you.
Anything else?
Sorry, Arthur.
That turnkey thing just gets us, gets us going.
So, aside from that, all the other numbers Bob had, as all the traditional numbers of making sure that you do your contracts and agreements, and repair and maintenance on all your buildings, and all the vendors who take care of our buildings now, and, you know, these vendors will raise issues with us from time to time, like, you know, you got to do something about rebuilding the cab, and your elevator, and the, in the town hall. Well, instead of just going and doing that, we put that into the bigger picture of the assessment. So, that's in the assessment. HVAC issues, remember we had some, you know, air conditioning failures because of lightning and other issues? Well, that's in it also, long-term. Parts of the discussion with Ty and Bond are going to be, well, when you go to do a project, make sure if that project relates to something else, you do it at the same time. Like, you don't re-roof the town hall, and then take the roof off three years later to take the air handle down. You got to be logical in what you do at one point in time. So, there's, there's a process that has to happen with that. So, that may group, that may group things together.
Second. What does a nine-hundred-dollar water cooler look like?
Water cooler?
For nine-hundred bucks a piece, what do that, what's that look like? What's the vision that you can't see?
Yeah, they're going to replace all the-
Copper, or-
Copper, and-
Water, oh, chillers?
And go probably to the, you know, the fillers, inverse-
They're going to run the new plumbing lines-
New plumbing lines, take off the old-
For drinking water, or is this for the HVAC?
No, drinking.
Drinking water?
So, what do you in New England call bubblers?
Bubblers, yeah.
They're nine-hundred-dollar bubblers.
Well, yeah, by the time you get done.
Yeah, with plumbers.
Oh, yeah.
It's like electricians. Prevailing wages, electric stuff.
Bubblers, yeah.
It's a water fountain.
Yeah, water fountain.
Depends on what country you're from, cooler.
I'm from the country of Massachusetts, it's a bubbler.
It's a bubbler.
I don't know, we just called them a garden hose growing up, you know.
That explains a lot.
Yes, it does.
Probably the easiest thing, Bob, is there any major thing that you see?
Regardless of the report.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, a lot of the, doing the windows and so forth is part of this study, so-
Window gaskets and glazing are in there, issues related to Police and Fire.
That we need to upgrade because the buildings get to twenty, twenty-six, seventy years since the last renovation.
But the painting, the carpeting, and the library, all that stuff is on-
The interior stuff is-
Yeah, Ty and Bond told me that looked really good.
Well, just the library should, we recited it, we re-insulated it, we painted it.
The library turned out to be good, because I told them, I said-
The only thing left with the library is a hundred-thousand-dollar parking lot. Then we'll be all set. Parking lot's next.
It's parking lots, it's, you know, it's-
Yeah, but the library in general, though, is really, we've done a ton to that building.
Right.
Literally.
And it's not leaking as bad anymore.
It's almost like we've built it twice in twenty years.
The basement is not leaking anymore.
Yeah, oh, we did, I'm sorry.
Did the study look at the drainage tissue over there?
Yeah, yeah, there's nice pitches-
Okay.
Around the building, in the report, color pitches.
It may be that some of them aren't working, we don't even know.
Right.
You know?
Could be clogged.
Like they were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think everybody would be doing themselves a disservice if we think right here at this budget hearing, we're going to be in any position to conclude what is going to happen first in-
No, 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 I don't think that's anybody's making, I guess the question is, is there anything in the budget now-
In general.
That you need to call our attention to outside of the building study that needs to be done in this budget cycle?
I think the building study kind of covered a lot of the stuff, like painting and-
We hold almost all of those issues in.
Lines.
So, that's going to be next year, it's not going to be this year's budget.
Crack fill-in, that's, that's in here, that's on a yearly-
Right.
They covered the maintenance along with the, you know, what needs to be done, per se.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, so you're, you're, it changes, but your budget right now, you don't see anything in here other than that booklet that we need to be aware of.
That, and the three percent maybe towards, you know-
Yeah, right, 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 yeah.
Because of vendors and- And, and I don't know where-
I'm trying to read your scribble, but it isn't going over well. So, next year, you're going to type that for me, sir?
Yes.
Or Carl's going to type it for you? I probably won't be here, but whoever the hell's sitting here is going to see that typed. This looks like crap. It's just like, what the, I think I'm in the Flintstone era.
Yeah, the situation Bob's dealing with is that-
No, and I get it.
You plug in a number to meet your budget targets.
Or you scribble it, or you can say plug, but I was just saying, scribble it. This is my writing.
Hey, could I ask, the, the part-time salary figures?
You looking for a job?
Would you explain those to me?
I, I haven't-
That's, that's all of your-
Part-time custodians?
Yeah, part-time custodians, your floaters, your substitute clerks, people who backfill, people on medical leaves. So, that's like, that covers about six or seven people.
And we know you're going to have a turnover in the near future.
Right.
So, you'll be training new people, and-
Yeah, it is worthwhile mentioning, when Mr. Fitzjell talked to the issue about his pending retirement, that between the year we're in now, all the way through to next fiscal year twenties end, and then right at the beginning of fiscal year twenty-one in July, we're looking at anywhere from five to seven people retiring.
We replacing them? Just checking, yeah.
I mean, part-time, some people are part-time people.
Trust me, we're all aging out, aren't we?
Some are department heads, right?
Some of us faster than others.
Right, we talked about the librarian.
Hey, and judging by the back row, you could be adding one or two more to that number, we just don't know.
No, I think we, they were going to keep them a year or two longer than that.
Just though, okay.
And that is not directed at the ECO.
We were working, we were looking at it.
Looking at the other gray side on the right there. The little darker complexion in gray is some of the-
Yeah, so, Richard, that, that covers about six or seven people.
Right.
And again, we may end up having to adjust that number, too, because Attorney Dupre is going through a-
Well, there's a whole nother thing coming that we're excited about. Yeah. Pay equity, it's called, right?
Yeah, he's just going through a process.
Because you deserve more.
I do.
And you're going to get it, I can promise you.
You could double our pay, right?
Yeah. Maybe our cell phones can come out of our selectmen thing, too, like everyone else. What do you think, no?
No.
Even though it rings night and goddamn day, no?
I think we're going to have a pretty tight budget this year.
Are we, yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, I couldn't tell, because the other, the other people up there, you were trying to give them more money, and they didn't take the bait. Now, we're typing in the budget? Okay, I'm just double-checking, because-
That was just for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth.
I thought you were having a hot flash or something.
No, just for the two-hundred and fifty. I got a nice Beatles, you know, concert, you know-
Next, you're all set, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Goddard.
But we got to type that out next year. Yeah.
Police Department, forty-five minutes.
Yeah, I understand why they do it that way, but-
I bet you, I bet you they could do it in fifteen.
No, I think this is going to be-
Here we go, salt and pepper.
Okay.
Did you get the message?
My what?
Did you get the goat message?
No.
I have three for you.
Three messages?
Three goats.
No, three goats.
Oh, I'm all set, thank you.
Carl, the goat, was the doctor.
Yeah, well, goat yoga's downstairs in the senior center.
What was the goat's name?
Carl.
Oh, jeez, here we go.
Oh, I can't, Carl. We will take it.
So, was it a goat?
Was it neutered, like the one we got, or?
Hey, wait a minute. I, I like the Tom Brady connotation.
Everyone in my house is neutered, so-
I, I, I'm only aligned with the Tom Brady connotation.
Oh, I didn't see that.
It was a goat, right, not a donkey?
Right, well, we have, we have-
Most jackasses on the other side of town.
Joe, they were talking about a Pontiac GTO.
Okay. All right.
You could see where we're at, chief, so go easy on them.
Just don't bring up drones and we'll be fine, so continue.
Just stop with drones.
Well, if you get one with a weapon on it, now you might have our attention, or you got a list of people.
Hi, good morning, finance committee members, I would like to first thank you for your service to the community by serving on this very important board, and for all the hours you donate to the N E R.
Oh, he's already sucking up, okay.
Anybody wear shorts?
It's called professionalism, maybe something we're not used to. To this board and to our community. Secondly, Lieutenant Landis and I would like to thank you for your support over the past year in the transfer of funds for the implementation of a much-needed TASER program, and the support of requests for funds for an officer to be in the full-time academy in June. I am glad to inform you that Reserve Officer Kelly Parks has passed all pre-test requirements and has been accepted into June Tent Academy. So you guys are all part of that process, so I thank you for that. I hope that as a department, we'll still have this type of support from your committee during this budget process.
He's smiling too, as he's saying that.
Yeah.
As we prepare to discuss these three budgets, I would like to point out that two of my major concerns while I was preparing the budget was proper training for all department employees in ways which is liable for the department as a town. I believe these two areas go hand in hand, hopefully, you should see how they tie in together during the budget process. So before I begin, I know that hopefully you've reviewed our packages, do you have any questions or clarifications? Like before we start, they may jump right out that you, uh, you wanted, or I'll just go into the budget.
No, but thank you for thanking the board-
Yeah, the board of selectmen.
Okay, okay, I was checking.
We were just gonna go.
We were gonna leave.
And I would like to thank the board of selectmen.
We can begin now.
So as you know, this is my first time, uh, actually presenting a budget, so-
We noticed.
Looked at the paperwork, I'm just basically gonna go over the narrative for the items that I'm looking to increase and stop any important time going too fast or make modifications.
Are you guys in charge of that going too fast?
Going too fast speech-wise, not, not- No, we waived all three of them in town, a good big offense.
Well, we took care of that with the potholes. They don't go fast anymore in this town.
Uh, the first item we're gonna go to the Police Department budget is salary line items. A full-time officer line item, I'd be asking for that to be increased, because we go Reserve Officer is gonna be, uh, going into the academy, and after that, she would be into the next fiscal year budget, so we'd be asking for funding for another full-time police officer. And that is in lieu of an officer that would, uh, is reaching age maximum in March of next year, who's mandatory retirement at that point in time, so it's really just a backfill, not an additional officer to our department.
Right, you're phasing in a person and you're paying for them while they're at the academy, and you're, you have to prorate that because you've got the other officer who doesn't leave till after nine months through the fiscal year.
Right.
Question, Mr. Morgan?
Nope.
Okay.
So there should, by, in twenty-one then, there should be a, that actually will help your salary line item. Because you're gonna have a very young, eh, career-wise person replacing a senior.
So we'll be looking for a reduction.
So you could just pencil that in for twenty-one.
Yeah, that it should drop a little bit, just-
Well, no, we're gonna get the lieutenant. Part-time records clerk, um, there was an increase by the prior administration to increase that to a total of thirty-six hours, she works eighteen now. Um, I really think after meeting with her, we would request one to be for additional, eighteen would be for additional ten hours, um, on top of her eighteen that she has now. Part of the position has changed for her in the past couple of years, she's taken a very active role in our, uh, public records request. Many of you may know that their public records become very cumbersome for law enforcement agencies now. They request the records every time for everything out there, with an additional task that has been, uh, put on to her. Amongst other things, I would like to see her start taking over some responsibility also, so-
Kevin, does that twenty-four number reflect that ten hours, or is that reflecting eighteen more?
Ooh, I'm sorry, that's twenty-four.
Yeah, the requested by the department right here in column.
Did you adjust that down?
Ten hours for eighteen.
Right, does, does that- So does that reflect, you're, you're adjusting your ten or your eighteen more?
The seven thousand dollars more a year, does that cover eighteen hours more or ten hours? I think so too.
That's just covering, that's covering the ten, okay.
Reserve training is, we're looking for an increase now, we're presently rebuilding our reserve police unit. Over the years, it has dwindled down from eleven officers to six reserve officers. As you know, we've seen with Kelly Parks stepping into the place this past year, becoming a regional officer, they are a very big part for our police department, as far as our reserves, we do rely on them. They do help us when it comes to replacing people, not having to stay off overtime, they do work at a, at a cheaper rate. But with that in mind, we have two reserve officers just entered into our, uh, in-house training program. The established program consists of four hundred and eighty hours of training for officer, and the hour rate is twelve seventy-five. So that's why we are asking for that major increase. Once those two are trained, we already have two other officers that we're working at, we're just gonna keep continuing and trying to go above our original, and get it back up to where it, uh, it was for many years. And again, I, I'll point out things, like, instead of my first opening statement about liability, the bottom line is failure to train, those are things we're getting while, uh, police departments and communities control, is failure to train your police officers. The standard before was four hours a month of training. Uh, right now, Lieutenant's recommendation, we're gonna give them eight hours of training, our whole support unit. Because the laws are changing, the, the new law reform that just went into effect, Lieutenant and I are still trying to get a grasp on it, pages and pages, there's a lot of, where it's constantly, uh, a reserve officer, only four hours of training, um, you know, it's immediately bulked up to get them to that next level, making sure they're proficient, the, uh, the cruisers on the streets out there. Community placing, we'll see an increase there of each, uh, three hundred and forty-four dollars for a total of twelve. I'll give you my reason behind that, is again, I know every administration has their own way of, of doing things. When I look at budgets, I like to know what my budget is from, sir.
Just point a rec for everyone here, if, if you go seven or eight, ten pages in, is, you're, you can follow his narrative as he goes.
Oh, I thought it was all part of that, or-
It is.
It is, but it's just-
We usually start, everyone else starts on the first page of their budget, you've got a better narrative so that people can follow what you're saying.
Yeah, those are the areas I'm looking for increases for the amount of our global fund.
Someone must know how to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. So basically, when I prepare a budget, I like to know how much it could tend to cost me to run a program for the year. Our Citizen Police Academy, you know, oh, this one is for, the slide is pay the salaries of officers for teaching or assisting in Citizen Police Academy in RAD classes. In the past, the officers were encouraged to take comp time or agree to shift, uh, switch shifts, which I, we fully support also. Lieutenant's doing a great job, they're trying to get officers to pull off a shift and put them into a position where they don't have to pay them overtime to come into it. So we're doing that, we're gonna encourage to do that too, but I like to know how much, worst-case scenario, if one of my officers or the department turns on, they don't want comp time, they don't wanna do shifts off, how much is it gonna cost me to run that program? And that's why I budgeted totally for what it could cost to continue running our Citizen Police Academy and our RAD classes.
May I interrupt just for a quick second?
Yes, sir.
There's an organization in town that's raising money for the RAD program. Just had somebody yesterday come in and purchase several signs, and she asked, when is the next RAD class? Or how could she go about finding out? When, when's the next RAD class being offered?
Right now, what a problem that we're issued with right now is that we have, you run the RAD class with two officers, Officer Si's out with a torn ACL right now. The lieutenant came up with the idea, and we had permission from the unit to get Officer Parks trained to be a female, uh, nicely a female in RAD class. Problem is, she's going to the academy right now, we don't wanna send her off to get trained, 'cause we're afraid she'd get hurt in training and the thing. So right now, I can't give you any answer, as soon as Officer Si comes back, we would like to probably get that by the fall.
Do you, do you put it on your website?
It will be, it will be posted to your website.
Even the sign out front, 'cause now it says to set your clocks back, so maybe by then that'll come down.
Now I'm charged for our signs, since it was told yesterday to take that down.
I checked my clock, I think I said it already, but I appreciate the update.
Eleven, okay. So I could tell people, follow your, uh, website, you know, and that would be, or the sign out front, you know?
I think you see with, again, with this administration, you see that we are very much more, uh, social media, you know, on top of that. Facebook is very active out there, our webpage, we've actually opened up a Twitter Instagram account also, we haven't used it yet, but we have secured the South Dakota Police Department name, so we're gonna be branching into that area. We have to worry about the people a lot, you know? Newspaper just doesn't work anymore.
No, it does not.
Crossing Guard salary, again, when I look at that, I, I don't know where these numbers came from before. I just look at for a hundred and eighty days, to pay him his hourly rate to be there for a hundred and eighty days, comes out to the total price of five thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Right now, we're already in the hole on that budget. And maybe I save some money, 'cause sometimes if he does call in sick, we don't pay him for a sick day, we put a patrolman there, we might save some money there, but I don't like the guarantee that he's gonna be sick. This is, if he's not sick and he's there every day, that's why I'm looking for the budget increase in that area.
Kevin, you have a backup person, right? You actually have a, a substitute?
No, sir.
Crossing guard or?
Not, not been, no, we don't put one on yet.
You, you have the latitude to do that.
Yes, we do, yep, yep, you got it. Um, like I said, this gentleman right now has been doing very well with his sick time, we haven't had to do a lot of replacement, you know, you know, with him at that point in time. And again, the amount of time it happens is not a big issue for my-
Well, plus if the person doesn't work, they're not paid, so there's no, there's no, there's no benefits with that position.
Right, well, you got it. Uh, contracts, this is an area that Sue Anderson, my secretary, pointed out to me. Uh, there was always a major concern for her, is that she had these budgets that get paid out for, and she knows how much these contracts, these warranties all go for. And over the years, yeah, she was always instructed to pull money out of other line items to pay for these budgets, which would then leave other areas, um, short in that area. But I'm trying to talk a little bit about it, is, is like the TASER unit, that's just a warrant, that's something new we're adding to it because of the, the support we have from the Finance Committee, that's a rental, or, is a rental office in town? A rental program with a TASER program, so it was already approved by the Finance Committee, that's why we're bumping that up into the contract, that's gonna be paid for the next couple of years. The only one coming in here is Officer Miles, my computer administrator. It is a new Barracuda and Sensual software subscription. It provides spam filtering, virus protection, integrated end-use training link. It basically is gonna scan every one of our emails and throw it into a box before it even gets sent into our, into our, uh, system. Some of you may know where we have been hit twice with the ransomware, where they locked down all of our security, and they wanted, the first time they wanted thirty-five hundred dollars, and I'm sure how much they wanted the second time that they wanted it. One time it happened in my administration, it started being computer administrator, and it happened after, after, after Miles. Luckily, we have a great backup system, we're able to shut down all of our data, get our backup and get it back on board. If we hadn't, we would've, all of our data wouldn't have lost at that point in time. This is just another wall of defense, you know, out there that my computer administrator is recommending. School safety software, this is already in our budget operation. Uh, it was under operations, we're gonna move that into contractors, now that becomes a, a, how do you describe it? We run the software, they always make you pay for a maintenance program.
A recurring cost.
There you go, sir, a recurring cost. We're just trying to clean up some things, get things into the areas where they're big. Because before what would happen is you would end up running, pulling money out of, I don't know, like, under operations where you go to pay for something or buying it, and now you're paying for a ransom part of it. So we're just trying to get it up into the area that we believe that, that it belongs in, the continuation of that.
And you've gone in and pulled those numbers out of those line items?
Yes, sir.
And adjusted them?
The thing is, if I, if I budgeted for three thousand dollars for computer supplies, and somehow throughout the years, it ends up being three, like a warranty? Pro, they, they were pulling out of that, now you're depleting what the operation was supposed to be for. If that makes any sense.
It does, so, so nothing that you're, so you didn't-
An increase, so I'm saying it's-
It's an increase, no matter what, it's an increase.
Right.
Okay. I was just hoping it was different, but that's fine.
Yep.
I understand.
Increased present, we have D-FIBs, we have an amount of money that have to pay for those on a yearly thing, they can inspect them, any updates they have to do, and then we need to improve, uh, increase the present subscription of D-FIBs in the amount of one thousand five, if we purchase two new, if two new D-FIBs is approved, and we talk about that later in the capital. We've got a program there now, if we buy two more, we're not gonna need any more for three years, so we're gonna have some cost saving in the future, you know, one. But again, it's all subscription-based.
So you save on capital-
Yeah.
Later, but you have the operational cost to keep-
Yes, sir, yep. Moving down into operations, dues, does the general increase?
Can I, can I back up?
Sir, yes, sir.
Let me back into the, uh, into the, uh, first page for us. What's incentive? Now, you had, uh, this year's budget is, and previous ones are like a hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-two. What you had written down in the level funded is only twenty-six thousand, six hundred and-
It's missing a one in front of it.
Well, again, and now, this is, I'm gonna go back, it's, I'm not using, using example or whatever, but, uh, these, all of these line items gotta be filled in, and there has to be numbers on the bottom to make sense. And we're, frankly, we're getting away from that, and, um, and every year it seems to be eroding a little bit more as time. I, you know, if, if we can't get the department heads to get these things totaled, and the, and the accountants to tell them, send it back, it's not filled out properly, I want it filled out properly and get it back to us, 'cause this is ridiculous. This is how you compare things, what's up, what's down, what's, whatever. And, and I, I don't see why-
I agree. We went through that with building and grounds with the pencil, I was just like-
Absolutely.
We were at the Flintstones again.
Shaking my head on this, but, uh-
But I get it, but you're right.
And it goes back and back and back, and there's a month, and every year it's, it's worse.
Looser and looser.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes, and I, you don't think I will speak up for a department, 'cause, 'cause it is my first budget.
No, no, yeah, I'm not-
The package that we get, we're told not to touch the salaries.
Yeah, I know, I know.
No, it's just missing a one.
Yeah, I know.
It's a typo.
Yeah, the typo part, I'm saying it's part of the rest of them.
No, you were a great example for me to, uh, expand on to, you know.
That's Terry Miss, he drives a-
No, you didn't, literally down below on the first page, under this budget-
Yep.
Right here, we don't have the color one, we have the, this thing here. There's, it just says twenty-six.
Instead of a hundred and-
Six oh oh, it's missing the one.
That's fine, that yours does, but mine-
Yeah, ours is missing.
You just have an updated one.
Ours is literally missing the number.
Okay, okay, alright.
That's where he's coming from.
Where'd yours come from?
Last year.
No, this was the package that Kevin did.
Yeah, what's a hundred grand?
Across the line, across the line, okay, okay, yeah, I didn't touch it, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, it's just a typo, but to his point-
Why we don't have numbers in all those columns, we're just told not to even-
Well, it's not, it's not even so much that.
Okay.
It's, you were just, you just happened to catch that, and so, you know what, I'm gonna make a complaint.
That's not, uh, it was, it's- He has no control over that line, that, that line item's controlled by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts because of the statutory requirements of the Quinn bill.
We get it.
Understood.
The Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen are reviewing the budget.
Right.
It's not just lost a hundred grand that was statutory, obligated to fund.
My dad was a CPA, my oldest brother was a CPA.
What happened?
I'm a great with numbers, huh?
This is what was before you. So, this started the aggravation. You know what I mean? Not to be a jerk, but just like, what the heck is that? It's my writing.
You get down to-
And it's not good.
I was giving the Finance Committee, I saw the credit, you guys, I thought you went through, they made your own notes on everybody's budgets, I was in your credit.
Thank everybody for you.
I looked at yours, like, wow, they really take their time, and I thought you were making your own notes on the whole thing out there, okay, well.
No, we're trying to be someone else's.
But anyway.
Okay.
Alright, anyways, I went back to dues, just a five percent increase, um, and dues that, that do come up over, over the years. Chief development training, you know, budget, I'm asking for, but they did go to the international last year. Uh, it wasn't a fund that we already went in, in the hole in that, in that area, what it costs for-
I thought you were trained before you got the job, now we gotta even give you more training?
No comment, so I'll move on to the next one, but again, chief development training. You know, there is a lot more training out there, again, I, I think education is a big part, break from the chief, break down to our reserves out there. You know, there is a lot more training out there, again, I, I think education is a big part, break from the chief, break down to our reserves out there. We've got to keep our officers, you know, up to snuff, I think you need to keep your chief, your lieutenants up to the standard. The laws are changing every day, the emails that I get from the Massachusetts, the federal laws that are going into effect, it's amazing. Every time a new law comes out, there's a two-day training coming up just on the new law reform that just went into effect out there. And it's just amazing, you know, so, that's stuff to try and keep me up to, to snuff the best we can.
Minimum mandatory at the academy, had one spend thirty hours, minimum mandatory the state requires, they just went up to forty. And even the forty, and that, when you do a, a block of firearms, you're already eight, that's eight. C- CPR, first aid is eight, doesn't take much to get there. Then the Criminal Justice Reform Act that just came with all the new juvenile laws and everything, that is a whole nother education process that, that we're dealing with that is above and beyond that. So, it's just, there's always something, the marijuana law, now all the impaired driving, how that affects it. So that's all training that where these guys are gonna, they don't even know what we're going to be trained in it yet, they're working on it. They're trying to do one-day, two-day classes as it is now, just to give you a foot up. But it's just so, it just, it'd be a long term as far as how it evolves and the training is just not stop.
And that's mandatory, what they said then is that an individual department sometime want training for our officer, we feel meet the needs of the Southwood's department. So it's just a, an involvement thing, you know. Then we've got some increases there. Uh, Taser ammunition, there's really no increase or decrease requested this line item. I'm just asking this line item dollar amount we moved into operations with line item, which is ammunition. We have a line item for ammunition, we have a line item for Taser, I've talked to my firearms instructors, they would like to just see combined right into one, um, one line item. One less thing for you to have to look at next year, so I'm really doing you a favor.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Dive team services, these ones be used to certify, rebuild, inspect, repair numerous pieces of dive equipment. So really based on what it is, we have some mass that have to be certified every year. Lieutenant, he is working with the fire department now to see if we can combine actually our dive team to see if we can upgrade the level of, of that, of that department.
Yeah, we want to be able to utilize the, the resources that the fire department has, you know, hand in hand. I think we mesh well together with the new administration over there and they've got some certified people, just more personnel, more people to, to, to be able to utilize when we have a, uh, an animal weight.
Conference travel, again, that comes based under what it costs to send our officers, myself, the conference and travel events out there, you got to pay for food, you got to pay for mileage. And that comes under our conference and room, and room travel. Rad training, there's no increase or decrease requested with this line item, it's just that was under training before. And I'm just asking this item, uh, name be changed from rad training, the rad program. So we can use that money for, uh, for the items that go along with it, the gear, the helmets and stuff like that. Mr. Fox is telling me that he was possibly some money, you know, coming in prior to the approval of this, you know, I've been doing reduction there, I know there's some money coming into that, you know, in that area. We take the donations and, you know, co-balance it with the town funding. Cruiser maintenance, again, it's just with more amount of cruisers we put out there, I think all of you go to your car dealerships, you get your cars repaired. The prices never go down, it's just a general increase of how much, uh, they were increased, how much parts increased, um, over, uh, for the next coming year.
Kevin, let me ask you a question, are you seeing, because we were talking about this earlier with these, uh, these new platform police interceptors?
Mm-hmm.
Versus Crown Vics? Are you seeing those as having higher maintenance and repair costs than you did on the Crown Vics?
Yeah, you could, just the brakes alone, we're years back, remember you could, you can place pads periodically now, there's no such thing as brakes and rotors.
Yep.
All in one shot and just for a set of fronts, it's usually around seven hundred bucks.
That's, that's the thing with these new, these new vehicles.
Yeah.
And, and you're getting a hundred and thirty thousand, but you're running hundreds of hours of them on the engine without even rolling out the door.
Many of the things that we once relied on Best Auto to do, who generally, you know, works at, the rates are a little bit lower than the, than Ford.
A dealer, right.
We're spying, we're sending more vehicles to Ford just because he doesn't have the capability to work on this, on the issue.
So a lot more dealer expenses.
More stuff they put in, so I always look at, the more stuff they put in, the more stuff they can break. You know, the backup cameras, whatever, put in there, more things. Minor equipment, just a general increase of, uh, you know, more equipment that does brake staplers, whatever, you know, just comes under a minor equipment area. Uh, and we were, we've already used a hundred and fifty-seven percent of the budget. But we were already a short, uh, shortfall and we were doing a short rate change, so we're going to increase there. Computer supplies, Sergeant Miles again telling me it, it is an increasing cost of supplies that comes, the carbons to, um, the printing cartridges. I was looking for a general increase in that area. Ammunition, this is not an actual, but this goes back to that we talked about before, it's not a budget increase, it's just combining two budgets together, the Taser ammunition and the regular firearms ammunition. Uh, weapons maintenance program, this is something new that we are requesting under our operations. You know, if we have, I think twenty-seven handguns available now to us, we have, I think, seven patrol rifles because they're in the cruisers, we have the shotgun. But never, never have we had a maintenance program to go along with it. It was beg, borrow, and steal, maybe taking money allegedly out of the, out of the ammunition accounts to make it happen. This is an established program that now will, um, take care of weapons. If a, a trigger has to be replaced, if any weaponry has to be repaired, we want an actual maintenance program. The first year I have to admit, we have funded it already out of a forfeiture account that we've had. So Officer Burt's been working this, uh, this past year under my maintenance program already with that, with dollar money that we had there. Now we're just asking that be incorporated into our regular yearly, uh, budget, just maintain, maintaining all of those weapons.
Are the weapons sent out or is this some Officer Burt's-
No, Officer Burt's another train that we've done, we've kind of been doing a great job, we get, if you send it out, you're paying a lot, you know, a lot more. So Officer Burt's, you have to be specifically trained and certified for each one of those weapons. Officer Burt and Officer Taggart are trained for hand, the specific handguns to carry, assault rifles to carry, the shotgun. They are certified to do those actual repairs instead of sending it out at a hundred and ten dollars an hour. You know, he can, he can either pull him off shift and he basically takes care of it at that point in time. Is it an effort to give officers more chores before going deadly force? We'd like to repurpose our four retired Remington shotguns, we have them sitting over there, they're still being maintained, oil taken care of. Uh, have them reconditioned by our in-house department certified armor, displaced back into service of less than lethal weapons. These can be accomplished for less than acquiring new and will provide the same reliability. Uh, this we accomplish for an estimated cost of two, two thousand dollars for all four shotguns. As every time you pick up the newspaper, that, you know, the cops are getting hammered all the time, you know, why do they shoot the guy? You know, you know, with the record, why do they go, just give us another tool instead of pepper spray, Taser, it's actually a beanbag setup.
Oh, that, I was wondering, what's left, left, yeah.
Less than lethal, it is a beanbag setup where it doesn't shoot us, you know, that, and again-
That can be practiced on certain selectmen at any time.
Kevin, is that a one-time cost?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
Just make that conversion to each weapon is done.
Okay, because right here, what, see, once, once you look at it and says operational new line item, the concern that we would have is you create the line item to carry two thousand.
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden, it's going to be carried forward next year as opposed to just in and out one time.
Yeah, I'm making note right there, one time, one time, just to make that conversion, you know. Another thing Tracy will tell you too, is that it would be used for the officers to like bears. You know, and use it, you know, I used to carry firecrackers, try and show them, um, but they can also be used on a bear in an area that-
You don't want to get scum with a-
Firecracker?
Less than lethal.
No, you want to, you want to finish the scum.
Not be usable.
Yeah. I saw it happen firsthand in my own yard with it.
Yeah, well, that wants me to pull the trigger.
I know.
No, no.
It's just another option, you're going to see in police world, everything is giving the officers more options and tools to be able to street to do their job in a more professional way. Not for more professional, but there's more opportunity. And again, it comes back to liability, you know, why did you have to shoot when you have an option to? I guess what it comes down to, I look at it sometimes, you have a neighboring community next to you and they have like a firearm, uh, they have a less than lethal weapon. Something were to happen in our community, neighbors say, well, Westfield used this and they didn't have to go to the next level, why did we not have those tools? Not that we have to go out and buy anything Westfield had, I'm saying in a police world out there, if you're seeing these other things that are going across the, the country for liability reason, why are we not, if we're looking at it? And that, this is going to hopefully support it.
Where are you and Bobby in establishing the, um, town firing range in Southwood?
Well, um, I-
No names?
One of your butters hasn't been to cooperative. Based, at first on face value, they were, but they get them, they actually sign the agreement, it hasn't happened.
Oh, so it's one of the two parties that signs the easement?
Yes.
Because you got one signature already.
Yes, I did, and, uh, the second person, and, you know, at, when, when I sit with a person, I just don't get a good feeling that, you know, in six months down the road that we invest into putting this together, they wouldn't just say, you know what? I don't want you on the property anymore.
Or going.
So, we are actually, I, I kind of talked to Dick and, um-
Dennis?
Dennis.
About going through another?
Briefly, there's a, there's a location right, we're on the town dump property.
Yeah.
That may be feasible, we just got to look at the wetland issues and things, so that's kind of-
Yeah, we don't have a dump, we have a transfer.
Transfer station.
Lieutenant Landis, okay. Well, only because earlier Charlie was talking about, uh, his auxiliary officers and we said, wait a minute, our police department and Lieutenant Landis are working on another location so that they don't have- The auxiliary people don't have to leave town either or doing on private property.
Sure.
So, at some point, just make a note to touch base with him on what his auxiliary officers shooting and qualifying.
Right, because absolutely, we could, um, actually kind of bring them into our training.
Right.
Or Charlie, other than facilitating, hey, they're doing it next week, sending these people and our guys can train and can do it and that would certainly help with any kind of liability.
And that'd be consistent.
Absolutely.
Because those officers are only ever activated by the chief of police. So he wants to be assured that they've been properly trained.
No, no, we can certainly accommodate that. Even, even in our training now, that takes place at the Westfield Sportsman's Club. It's just a matter of, uh, talking, you know, of getting a day and, um, you could have a firearm, people do it, so there's some consistency.
This seems like a small thing too, as far as you're going to Westfield, about travel time there and back, you add an hour's worth of overtime on the officers, you know, for your training, eight hours for the day. But again, half an hour to get there, half an hour to come back.
Different, you got your traffic.
Times thirty-five, get over.
Logistics there, because it is Westfield, it's a private range, we have to send them notice like a month or two in advance and hope that we can get the day to do it. So it can be kind of cumbersome and so then it's, now you're still working to that schedule where had we had our own location, we, any day we can go, go there, any day, it's easier to, and it would cost less because we can schedule more days. When our, when our guys, our firearm guys, it would be days we'd take them off shift. Where when we get Westfield, we're at the mercy of their schedule. We're sending more people there on overtime because we can only work within that week, we can't, we have no flexibility here. We can look at people's schedules and say, okay, you guys are, we can send you all here without them worrying about overtime and just be-
Well, when you look at that other location up at the transfer station, be careful about which golf hole you're near.
Well, yeah, we're just beyond it.
Oh, just beyond it, good, good.
Yeah.
Mr. Peddell had a question too, for a little while.
This is a small item, I'm backing up to the dive equipment services. Does your narrative coincide with what showed up on, uh, on this form? Mine reflects, it doesn't reflect the increase. And it doesn't reflect the FY nineteen number, I think.
Equipment services, correct, um, line item five two one nine oh three, it was.
Oh, maybe, oh, there's another thing.
Two thousand five hundred.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm looking at down, down below.
Yeah.
You're fine.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Alright, moving on. We're into a capital line item, that has always been, uh, over the past couple of years, uh, you've got a great track record, very supportive of our department, there's two new cruisers every year. I was looking at adding another cruiser to, um, uh, the, the two of them to begin with, with my philosophy was that Sergeant Kreutka's our cruiser maintenance coordinator did a great job with keeping these things up and running. And we're trying to get as much as we could out. He said this year would be a good year for replacement of the, uh, the chief's cruiser and that we would then have taken the chief's cruiser and bumped it down into lieutenant. You have two administrators before you right now that our philosophy is, and, and we've proven it over the past, since July, is that we just don't sit behind the desk. When we're running two officers on the road during the day, you'll find lieutenant, myself responding to those calls and that's the backup. So thank everyone, we're administrative duties when we are out there responding. And again, I'm type of chief, that I have my cruiser with me, I've been in town all the time, I'm responding to, to a lot of these calls out there. Now that my officers can't do their job, only basically rolling on the hot calls, you know, major accidents, shootings, uh, things like that that we've had, you know, in the past year. So I wanted to get my cruiser, my cruiser right now is basically a family cruiser, it's something you, you can just buy for your family. It's not a police related, it's not a police rated cruiser. Uh, so I've gone to a hot pocket, we had a shooting call down in Griff, um, down just over the line in Connecticut, but it's still Southwood. But again, by the time we get to McDonald's, the brakes are fading on me, the brake system is completely different than what we have. I think some people can say, Kevin, you can take your, your slowing, your-
Take your foot off the brake, Kevin, when you're driving, but yeah.
Tell me that when it's your officer, your son, that has a gun pointed at him, that I will slow, you know, slow down. I'm just trying to say, if you want, for my purposes, it's the things that I'm looking for, for myself when it comes to, uh, being able to respond. So I was going to do that, lieutenant was going to give him my, my cruiser. Carl had a conversation with me when I went before the capital line item, uh, committee, um, capital committee people, those recommended actually go for free cruisers this year. The way he's explained to me, the, the last cruiser that we did donate to the, uh, donate, transferred to the town, already they're looking at, uh, another four or five thousand dollars to fix that one.
Right, great, it didn't make sense for us to take that hand-me-down because that was going to be forty-three hundred dollars just to bring it to a, not even the dealer and pay dealer rates, but to a local place. Pay that and then put that online when the same day I'm getting that number, I'm getting the quote for Randy's new engine on the other one, he got handed down for three or four thousand dollars for new engine. So we took her, the Randy DPW issue and of course, the building inspector was just in front of you with an increase in his auto, um, financing lineups. Because that relates to the same platform of vehicle. So rather than that, I thought, you know, I thought, you know something? You, you, you look out the window and you got the green car from the last chief, the admin car.
Two chiefs ago.
Right, two chiefs ago, and then you look at this one saying, well, maybe we're better off to have not a marked cruiser with the heavy use and the heavy duty stuff come to us. But another one of their admin cars come to us, you know, and make that our pool car because the other one, the Crown Vic, we still have a Crown Vic out there. We've got to phase that out of operation, we're basically phasing all the Crown Vics out. Because we need two pool cars. We have people going out and doing a lot of field work, including the assessor every day, and that is a key position that brings in, you know, dollars to the town. So that was something that was discussed at the capital expenditures planning committee would be a better solution than saying that all, you know, we're going to have to go buy another used vehicle from somewhere else when we could at least, you know, take a better condition, lower mileage, newer, recent car from the police department, take it down into a pool car like we did the last chief's car. And then give them another frontline responding vehicle.
And it sounds like any cruisers coming forward are going to be all in about the same shape. Any other thing coming off?
I tell you, the one that we're getting right now, that we're going to be, the, it's going to be our school resource officer.
Yeah.
One of our oldest one out there, Tommy right now is just band-aiding, approaching it, trying to keep the torque converted, telling me he's already looking at three or four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And if that one dies tomorrow, we're not putting any money in, you know, into that one.
Yeah. Plus, plus he has to send a vehicle to the academy at some point.
Yeah.
Not every day, but at some point.
What's it, what's it going to learn there?
It's going to allow your officer to finish that component and graduate.
I think he understands.
Yeah, I know.
Well, we just talked about those three Ubers in town, so.
Just want to wake people up.
And again, what happens with too, is that again, with all this training and stuff, I mean, we can, you know, it, again, lieutenant sometimes he responds to the calls, you know, um, you know, also, he's finally gets personal vehicle. This gives him another vehicle that would be earmarked for himself, you know, during the day, so. That's probably, we have a lot of cruisers over there when we have officers going to training based kind of the other basis for the school resource officer. Our dispatchers are going to training, they're, they're allowed to take a vehicle, you know, also, so it's just-
A lot of our details now are in questing, uh-
Cruiser.
They pay for them, you know, it's like, give a twenty dollar an hour rate that gets charged to the, the company, but a lot of them are one and two cruisers per detail in summer with a projects every day.
Right, next-
So, you know, we, we're, you know, there's days all our cars are out.
I think that admin money, that goes to the general fund too.
Yeah.
So Kevin, what, what unmarked vehicle, if you were going to maybe send your unmarked one to Bob, would Bob's unmarked one be coming here?
He doesn't even have one, he doesn't have one.
The Escape?
No.
That's a detective car.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I usually will-
So what, what were you contemplating which car?
The chief's car.
That would come to us?
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure, you were talking about-
Well, talking, we haven't said, talked-
You were talking about another one than another officer.
When Sergeant Kreutka heard this was going on-
Yeah.
He, he would prefer to have the chief's car. Again, discussion, I have to have one with lieutenant, um, it's fair, that's more feasible, so here's the-
I mean-
Well, you guys have worked that out.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, to be honest with you, the chief's car to the detective would be the, probably the best case scenario.
Right.
Car, you're getting, getting even less mileage than that and even newer.
Right.
Right.
But it's not a cruiser?
No.
No.
Okay.
It's just a little Ford.
It's the little-
Well, I mean, it is got lights and stuff and it just can't, the way it's set up, it's not a major transition to bring it to, to you. Not nearly as big of a conversion from-
Okay.
It would probably be least inspect, uh, least, uh, expense on our end to keep the chief's vehicle actually.
Right. Okay, that's fine. We just need something newer.
Right, and, and the Escape would probably be perfect.
Be more practical for-
Absolutely.
For us, yeah.
Uh, next capital line item, computer equipment, just a general increase of computers, uh, supplies over the next couple of years, I was trying to say for next year. Defibrillators. What Officer Weske, he's our medical control officer for our department, is asking for an increase of two thousand five hundred six with the understanding, with the purchase of these two D-FIBs, all cruisers will be equipped with a D-FIB. Once these two are purchased in fiscal twenty twenty and then this line item be placed on hold with no further funding request until twenty twenty-five. Because they're under a program, they're warrantied, they're maintained, that'll give us enough, uh, D-FIBs for what we have for all the cruisers. Um, at that time, we'll then need to start to purchase two, two more a year, uh, for twenty thirty. So again, we get us to that level and we're going to need the money for the next couple of years after that. Capital line item, school safety software is not an increase, we were just asking for the school safety software, which we already have under budget, under operation, we jumped into the contract line item. But now it's just a maintenance program that goes along with that, uh, with the school safety software. Sergeant Dest and Hutch, this is something that wasn't picked up over the past couple of years, we put a new sergeant, um, on with that split shift sergeant that you supported a couple of years ago. No one gave him a desk, no one gave him a place to work, um, so it was just oversight and, uh, even sharing a desk-
Does he have a locker?
He does have a locker, he does have a locker.
Got it.
So again, it, it goes back to when I was a sergeant myself, we had three desks, three Hutches in the sergeant's room. We had a little, and then when I became a computer administrator, they took me out, gave me my own office, Sergeant Sanders is in that office now, but we moved that desk down to that one. But now we have a new sergeant and he doesn't have a, a desk to work at that point in time.
You have room, you've got room to work at that.
Yeah, it'd be right, right back what it was, you know, three, four years ago. So I'm not doing that addition or anything like that, I'm just being, giving a sergeant a place to, to work. Two new line, uh, capital line items is a patrol rifle, one of shotguns, and this is from our firearms sergeant. They need to provide each officer the tools, they need to safely perform their duties as it pertains to firearms, a continuous cycle of maintaining what we have in re, in retiring or repurposing what we have. This includes the purchase of new equipment, rifles and shotgun. And basically what it's coming down to is that our patrol rifles and our shotguns, some of the ones are out there fifteen years old. When we, it is not like we're out there shooting every day with our patrol rifles, we're doing the training with, now, the academy is making us go to two eight-hour trainings a year, it used to be just one. So now there's thousands more rounds that are going to be going through these weapons before when it was just once a year. So he is recommending that we purchase these next two of these weapons here and every year we get to enter that folder of replacing them. Then the weapons that be coming off, offline will be used for training. So we're not putting a warrant pair on the ones that are used in, in a cruiser, on a, on a daily basis, hopefully not a daily basis, they're available to us on a daily basis out there. Thank you. Wifi in the police, in the police department, we don't have wifi in the police room, I think in today's age, if you go into a dentist office or gas station, there's wifi available for it. It's one thing that we don't have in the police department, there are some, some benefits for it, and we're not reading the whole thing. One thing that bothers me is, one thing I've always tried to say for our patrol officers out there, if you want to do a job, and you want to do it professionally, you've got to give the schools to do their job. It's embarrassing when I see a patrolman walking by my office with a victim going out into the parking lot. So if that victim can download something from their cell phone, because they have no coverage in our building, it's embarrassing that sometimes. For my officers, they, and they're very helpful, because they use their own phones to, to the police department. Tommy Pudka, the text that he gets, his texts about, the lieutenant used to get with their informants, with their people, and as soon as they walk into the building, they lost that capability. We're trying to increase the Wi-Fi coverage within our department. Also, our cruisers may be coming down the road. I'm not budgeting this year, but it might be mandated through legislation as far as body cameras follow us. With that, those things have to be downloaded. You can physically go into each, each officer can bring his camera in, you can physically download it, or you can pull into a bay and it's done right through the Wi-Fi. Same thing with updates for the mobile terminals that they have on our cruisers right now. You have to pull each one of the computers out, put a flash drive on, do all of our updates. Just another thing where you bring cruisers right into your shift, does all of our updates for us right there at that point in time. So that's just getting us to that next level, would be the, the Wi-Fi. Another big one is the Capitol Line item is the, the phone system. This phone system has, um, really run its life. We're still dealing with valid communication. The only parts we're getting now is anything that happened to be able to scrap off, or all the pieces of equipment they still have. They don't make that model any longer. We're looking at the same phone system that the town hall has. It would, uh, bring us to that level, would be voice over internet, that's everything is going, uh, in today's day. I've called, you know, probably yesterday just let them know our phone system is down, um, off and on since Wednesday. We're still trying to figure out why. We have valid communication, and we have Verizon there, and they still can't think of what the problem was. We call it, I'm the longest open on our dentist line. People are just getting business signals. It's an antiquated, you know, system that just, uh, the next step won't be for the today's phone systems without that.
And that, the Wi-Fi is on the same platform that was implemented at FIRE already. So when we get to the point that it's town-wide, it'll be able to be managed by, as one piece. So the police department won't have to manage it, but it's a separate network. They're on the same network as FIRE, yada, yada. They, they can't see each other and so on. And the phone system, same thing. The idea is, this was part of the, um, the overall planning process with Laura and everyone else, too. FIRE, police, and now town hall will be on the same phone system.
It's the IT.
Off-premise equipment, so it should defeat some of the obsolescence issue, too.
Some of this is part of our local share.
Correct.
And Kevin, this is your share of the telephone system, there's another share of the fire department.
Yes, and I believe it's right in front of me, as we presented, also, the same company, that they've brought together as a, a combined unit.
Right, and this is vo- voice over internet protocol.
And again, it may sound like a small thing, but by doing this, too, is just picking up the phone, all I have to do is punch in, I mean, we're just entering this. But just with the new phone system, I guess we'll have a direct line.
One hundred.
He doesn't tell us either.
Yeah.
Although, it may sound like it's a small thing, right now I've got to go through the five, six, nine number, and it gets me to, you know, and I can write directly to.
Same with us. We have to call the secretary, and if she feels like transferring it, we got to.
No, with you, they probably won't pick up.
Right.
Questions or comments on the police department's budget before we move on to the next part of our budget, which is the public safety dispatch?
Just general comment.
Yes, sir.
I, I know, new department, you want to do a lot of new things, a lot of increases here. Probably going to ask you to prioritize certain things, because quite frankly, you're probably not going to get everything you're asking for.
I'm sure. I'm sure. As long as I can sleep at night, something ever good happens in this community, I can sleep at night that I asked for it.
Right, right.
So I can say, for the people that I asked for it, I wanted, I need these tools, but the funding wasn't available.
Yeah, right. I, I just.
My officers, my eye, my community, they know, and they know that I'm fighting for them, and it just wasn't funded. That's not why.
How you sleeping now, son?
So what's that?
How you sleeping now, son?
Well, so far, great.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Great support, two for two of the finest.
I wouldn't want you up at night, lay worried.
I'm sleeping like a baby, but we'll see after this budget request. But I do want to say, Mr. Fattway, you are.
Right, right. I'm, I, it's, you know, in a perfect world, you'd get it all plus more.
You got it.
Okay? But I'm just looking at the realities of, of our, our budget process, so I don't want anybody under any illusion. Hey, I, I put together this great budget, and these are all things we need, but, you know, unfortunately, you're probably not going to get all of them.
You got it, you got it. But you're, I appreciate you putting that. All right. So wait for Mr. Mr. Macri to check from you.
I would keep going.
Okay.
The school's coming at eleven.
Okay.
And we're telling them the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the good news.
Uh, dispatch, dispatch thing. The big one, you've got a whole write-up on, I'm not going to read the whole thing for you, is I'm looking for a communications center supervisor. I think it's something that's been lacking for years and years. If you look at my narrative real quick, the write-up that I took, I'm just amazed that the town continues to spend money on having management studies done for our police department. We've done fifteen years ago on the Lombard. We've done again, I believe, under, uh, the fire department did one in between. I just did one last year under, just specifically for the dispatch center. Each one of these management studies study, we should have a, a separate supervisor for the dispatch unit out there. That, that, in the police world, the dispatcher unit is considered, uh, the, the stepchild of the police depart- of that agency. They're a forgotten entity. What they are doing now for us as a community is unbelievable. They are now trained, they're supposed to be trained, and, and quality assurance trained, that they're supposed to be able to deliver a baby over the phone, do CPR over the phone. It's no more of just, hello, there's a fire, send some people. The training and responsibility is on their shoulders now. It's just unbelievable. So as you can, if you take some time to take a look at the recommendations that I, that I put together from this app, uh, from this outside agency, I'm just amazed that we don't have someone in that position. We can take a look at it. I've had some discussions with, with Mr. Moklin, you know, how this position already stopped in. We discussed one time, and he even said right now, maybe it was a management issue that hasn't been done over, over the past years within house. And I would debate that forever, that it's not, it's just there's so much more now with that dispatch unit. It's not a police function anymore. When I used to try, and I was the person, I would be the liaison between myself and the dispatchers. I've never dispatched, I've never wanted to dispatch. It's a civilian position, and just to put another police officer in that position, I don't think it's the smartest move for the future for the progression of our, of our police, the firm, and our, our, our dispatch unit, you know, and public safety as a whole. I know the fire chief is supporting it, you know, also. Um, and again, the budget comes out of my, out of, of the police side, just because we may have always, you know, been at that point in time.
I'll, I'll just add that I spoke with Chief Anderson, and he concurs. A very important position.
Anyway, as we're lacking, we've got some areas in this thing, that every, every EMD calls, but we're mandated by the state to take twenty-five percent of those calls per month. We have to have a person sit there with a checklist to make sure that every, this EMD is so black and white. Did you, did you ask them if they're breathing? Did you tell them what to do? They have a whole checklist. If they don't do that, they fail the call. Then they have to go back, and you have to sit with them first to retrain them. Then if they do it again, you have to send them back out to retraining again. I have to admit, and, and not undermine the bollocks, it's come to the EMD, come to the EMS side of this thing, it hasn't been done in two years. So we've got public records that are showing that these things are not being met. There's been no retraining or anything to go along with it. It's time-consuming, it's convert sent. The fire department has had, I have one of their people do it, and it's just, it, it hasn't been working. To me, it's just a major liability that we can be looking for the future, that is not being done the way that the state mandated, of course. It's likely no effect, they, uh, how you call it, unfunded mandates, telling us we have to do it. They're not telling us to give us the funding to do with it. And that's why it's back on our plate at this point in time. Salaries, it could be a salary increase, if you do support the, uh, some of these things would reduce if you don't support the dispatch supervisor position. I'd be looking at a decrease on the, on the salary line item for training, uniforms, confidential travel. That's just competing. You don't go to the council, you do it. We're going to have to send somebody to do the training, and I'll get again prepared for that position. Uh, dispatch training, again, supervisor, and it really does minor equipment at that point in time, uh, some minor equipment. This is a small increase to help us make it through the year.
See, if, if this position were supported, how do you, that person can't do the audit, though, on the EMD side. So how do you propose to close that gap?
Yeah.
They would be able to do it? They would be qualified to do the medical audit?
After three-day training, after three. Myself went through it, Chief Krenicki sent me through it, never understood why he sent me through, because I never would, never had me do it. But we know that's on the EMS side, you know, of it. But see, dispatchers do a role. They fall into the EMS side also.
Right.
And that's why it's proposed.
But the dispatch supervisor could do the EMD audit that's not being done today, that, okay, thank you.
And the other piece of the proposal, too, is that it's, it's just very, we should do, if you look at your dispatch center with training that we've been to, we should be also pulling business lines and listening to the, the correspondence between our dispatchers and how they, you know, public service, uh, quality assurance, where they pay for it, radio communications, although it's not just the EMD that we're looking at for the supervisor, taking over the training. Right now, I'm still doing all the grants for the dispatch, you know, unit, you know, I was based to do it as lieutenant. Now it's transferred up. I'm still doing it, you know, as, as the police chief there. This is something I would like to have the dispatch supervisor take over to get the grants and funding for the police department that we, you know, that we, that we continue to get. Moving on.
Moving on. You got the school behind you, and you know, just like a principal or a teacher. You know, you don't want to get yelled at.
Give me some attention back there. I don't want that.
ACO, you want to come up? If she's doing ACO, come on up.
Come on up.
First of all, it's good to see Tracy.
It's good to see you both.
If you haven't met Liz Bennett, she's the one that's been.
Oh, we know her, we know her.
I thought you were pulling your chair out, felt like a gentleman.
There you go.
So anyways, as we know, Tracy has been out for quite a while. It's a medical issue, but she's up and about, feeling a little bit better, and every day getting a little bit better. Can't wait for her to get back, get rid of this one.
I know your wife's been knocked out.
But again, stepping to the plate, she's been doing a fantastic job for us, but it's, you know, we do appreciate that. So we will get into our, our line item, um, her, what do you call it, animal control budget for fiscal twenty twenty. The hourly rate, when we did bring in our floater for the assistant ACO, when Tracy does return, we would like Liz to stay on as our part-time ACO floater. We have our people that go out in the middle of the night as a floater and, you know.
Per deams.
Yeah, per deams, okay. We also have had funding over the years for, for an ACO. If she's gone for a week's vacation or something like that, she steps in, takes over the role at that point in time. When we hired her, we hired, the rate before was thirteen dollars an hour. When we hired her at fourteen seventy-five, um, that money's already been depleted, but that's an issue that we're dealing with with the budget. So we're just asking if she were to stay on, we would like to keep her at the fourteen dollars seventy-five hour, uh, fourteen seventy-five rate, if she does stay on after that. That's why we have an increase in there. And that's all based on how many hours she does and how many hours she can do throughout the year. And basically, it's a position where if she goes to, if Tracy goes to training, goes on vacation, has sick time, that's when we use, if not both of them working together, it's just a backfill for Tracy if she happens to be out for some reason at that point in time. Repairs and maintenance, this just comes from our supervisor, Bob Johnson. Uh, he's set that standard. Uniforms, again, if Tracy comes back, she's still here, we've still got to get her equipped with a little bit more uniforms, get into more professional part of her position out there. Uh, assistant fees, there's no money increase. I'm just add, this is the thing where our stipend people, our stipend people, we give them thirty dollars, they're called out in the middle of the night. It comes under operations. I've got to contact with Miss Fle- Mrs. Fletcher from the accounting department. We'd like that they move that up into salary, so it's not an increase we're taking from operations, but putting it up into the, the salary account. You know, increase in there. Office supplies, just a general increase in that area. Maintenance supplies, again, by Bob Johnson, what he feels I need for the maintenance of that department. Uh, new line item we are requesting is a new commercial washer and dryer. More laundry, laundry being added by our new, uh, outside ACO West Springfield. Uh, system machines are not commercial, not can handle additional work. And also, Lieutenant, it's worked out with, uh, with Tracy, that we have our, we have blankets, that every prisoner has to get a blanket. We can't just go and, uh, ship them off. It's a total expense to ship them off to local cleaners, is that we'd also be able to use that for our purposes also.
So the West Springfield animals are now covered?
Yeah, West Springfield. And that's another part, and somewhere in my narrative, we did discuss that about that, too, is I think it's down at the very bottom. I'll actually wait till we get to that part.
What are you wa- what are you washing in these from the animal control part of it?
We're washing blankets and towels.
Dogs and stuff, and cats have been in?
Yes. There's a lot of hair involved.
Yeah, and that's, be my concern, is that, you know, you get a, I was going to say a patient, a prisoner.
They're fine.
That's allergic to something. I don't know.
They're fine. Commercial.
No, we, we could, we could actually just run a clean, nothing wash through, and it would wash all the hair out and stuff.
Okay, I'm just saying, yeah, for liability, somebody, you know, he's sitting in the bed there, some drunk. Me, I don't have any allergies.
Was it itchy eye because he thinks he's sitting in dog hair?
That's what I'm saying. Liability, that's what I'd just be concerned about.
We've had those tested by Victor. Victor had spent a weekend there, I think, at one time, and, and, uh, we, we've heard about the blankets.
Won't be funny if we get sued.
No, understood.
No, he's, no, they get also the blankets from the jail. That's what they were just talking about.
Right, the jail blankets.
So you're going to wash human stuff in this machine?
No, not with the animal stuff.
No, not.
No, no, not to say it's in there.
We can run a sanitizer cycle first, before we put them in, because it's like seven dollars a blanket.
Just like if you send it out to any commercial place, you know, I mean, it's, it's no different.
You, you go to any of the commercial washing places, and they wash horse blankets.
Right, right.
So.
Along with human stuff.
Yeah, I can understand Terry's concern, but I don't, I don't think it's a big concern.
Lieutenant would make a policy and procedure that will.
There you go.
Be a sanitary, uh.
Sanitizer wash.
Like it's being put in there. The other part is a scanner, printer, and laptop, and software request of eighteen hundred. Would the increase in other ace, outside animal control officer in West Springfield would be need to purchase the printer and the computer, so that, right now, Tracy has an office. You don't need that the other two, Agwam and West Springfield, going into our office. We, we set up a little office area for them when they come in there to do their paperwork, and what they have done, they don't need to be in Tracy's office with that. On a side note, we've entered into agreement with the town of West Springfield. They'll be paying the general fund fifteen thousand a year for the use of our kennels, and we're going, we've increased the fee to the town of Agwam for, for the same services, with a correct twenty-five hundred dollars.
Where does that stand, that, that other, you and Joe?
I gotta just reach out. He's, he's emailed me ten times, and I just went too busy.
Right, you guys had negotiated some sort of an adjustment.
I'll fix that next week.
So basically, is that, you know, we're asking for some increases in the ACO, or also bringing in new money into the general fund of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. All of my other budgets, but that's animal control.
Because we drank.
Yes, you drank. That's all that I have. Lieutenant, do you have anything, sir, before I close up, or anything?
No, obviously.
The drone, where's the drone? I didn't hear of the drone.
No, let's not even go there.
Obviously, it's going to open up a lot of discussion amongst you regarding what we are, as Mr. Fox stated, what we're looking for. So, um, I'm open, obviously, there Monday through Friday, twenty, you know, eight to four. Um, we invite anybody to please, if you have questions regarding some things, um, to please come in, talk to us. We'll let us show you some of the things that we're looking at, what, what we're working with and what we're looking at. So I just, our door's open, that's.
Yeah. One, one quick question. I know we've got to get to the school, but fees. Are, are there fees that we're not collecting? I mean, something that might still be hanging out there and, in a court where, uh, monies need to be collected?
Um, might be a discussion we want to have. Yes, there is.
Okay.
And I'll explain to the, you know, we just discussed.
Okay, I'm, no, I'm just, you know, I'm looking for revenue.
There is, but every time that there is that revenue thing, an officer has to, has to be paid overtime.
Oh, okay, okay, so it's.
If we're bringing in a hundred-dollar fine, we're paying three hundred seventy-five dollars fed officer to go there.
Okay.
So it's.
Well, that's if you send the upper echelon.
But there is some discussion going on now with newborn officer and Michelle Hill, to see if we can bring some of those hearings into the local level first, before it gets into the court.
Okay.
That'd be neat.
Okay.
So we are looking at that, absolutely.
All right, I, I'm just looking for revenue, because I, I took a beating this week, and I'm looking for revenue.
I know you did, yeah.
Another dog?
I said beating.
Oh, 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 oh.
Not a biting.
As Lieutenant said.
It's almost more of a drowning.
Door is always open. The business card is given you also has my personal cell phone number on the back. So as you're going through these things.
Oh, you look at that.
Night reading.
Don't call him at midnight, he said.
Please feel free to reach out to me and give me a call if you need more clarification.
Before midnight.
Make a call, it's a count, twenty-four, seven, twenty-four, seven.
That's not going to cost us three hundred a call, is it?
I don't get, I don't get calling anymore. I don't get four. I'm not union anymore. Um, again, I'd like to thank you all for taking time on your Saturday morning to be here today and to listen to our budget request. Last thought I would like to leave you with today is that I firmly believe this, this budget that we have presented to you is not one that is full of fluff or unneeded requests, but one that will, that will need to be funded to meet the needs of a progressive, forward-thinking police department, public safety dispatch center, and animal control center. So again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good day.
That's your fault.
Mr. Chairman, we got a five-minute break before the school.
Five-minute break?
Okay, fiscal year twenty budget resuming. It is eleven oh five, and the agenda appointment at this time is the Southwick-Tollin-Granville Regional School District Budget Presentation.
Thank you very much for having us for the audio purposes. Uh, this is Superintendent Jen Willard, and we're here to present the fiscal year twenty budget to you. Uh, we did our public budget hearing a few weeks ago, so I apologize to some of you who came, and thank you to those who came. Um, we're really trying to create this air of transparency amongst the three towns, and so we're trying to present as much of the information to all three towns at, at the same time. Uh, as you know, if you came and if you didn't know, the greatest impacts to our budget this year is, we've been going back and forth. We talked about it in our roundtable meeting in November, about how we were going to implement technology and where we were going to put it in the budget. Uh, so, uh, after much discussion, many meetings, uh, what's the best interest of the students in our district, we are going to a one-to-one device for our students, and it's going to be a four-year implementation plan. So one of the impacts to this year's budget is going to be end-user technology included in the operating budget. The other impact to our budget this year are the fixed cost increases that you will see on the second page. see on the second page. I'm not going to read them all to you, but these are the ones that we just don't have any control over. The next portion of the budget is the governor's proposed budget. We don't know what it's going to be when it comes out, we have what we lost based on the foundation numbers, and this year's, Southwood's increase in the minimum local contribution was three hundred twenty-eight thousand one hundred three. Granville actually decreased five thousand five hundred twenty-five, and Talon decreased twenty-four thousand seven hundred fifty-one. Talon lost thirteen of, thirteen students over the course of the year, I can actually tell you. So they had, well, they lost nine, so they had fifty-two students in fiscal year nineteen, and it dropped down to forty-three this year, so they lost seventeen percent of their enrollment. Granville lost one student, and Southwick lost thirteen. So Southwick was at a one percent decrease in student enrollment, Granville was at about a one percent decrease, and Talon was at seventeen percent decrease in student enrollment. So if you look at the minimum local contribution increases, although Southwood's went up three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, the overall was two hundred ninety-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-seven, based on the decreases. The chapter seventy increases this year from the state, they told us about twenty dollars per student, so it's about twenty-eight thousand six hundred dollars. So those are the increases to our budget, our funding increases. If you look at the budget revenue summary from, on the next page, you'll see that chapter seventy over the course of the few years is going up minimally, it's about twenty to twenty-five dollars a student. Regional transportation is going up minimally. You'll see the E and D last year was almost non-existent, because we had the E and D issue with the reimbursement from the state, so we used, if you look at revolving accounts, we went and used our school choice revolving account to help offset the budget. This year it's back to normal, using E and D to offset the budget, and our revolving account back down to where it should be. And the town contributions continue to increase every year. The capital improvement needs, again, we come to you every year with our need to keep our fleet in working condition, so we are looking to purchase a hundred seventy thousand dollars in two large vehicles. We need to replace the roof at the maintenance facility in transportation, we have in there gym divider, one of our safety concerns is, in the courtyards, we need to put paved surface or a solid surface outside the air intakes to snow blow it during the winter, for fresh air to get inside, new bleachers for our track and soccer fields, technology infrastructure, extend our building automation system to the transportation and maintenance facility, and we have our powder mill playground in there, including site improvements. I hate calling it just the powder mill playground, because it's much more of a parking lot water mitigation issue it's turning into. The playground is what we're going to see at the end of it, that's going to look pretty, but it really is a huge undertaking to mitigate the water issues that are plaguing that field and that area. I'm going to turn it over to Steve now.
Real quick question, the new bleachers, thirty thousand sounds very low. With a park on top of it. Is there like a continuing adding stuff?
It's basically two portable units, ten row, ten rows high, the ability to move them as needed to other locations, so for say, if a graduation ceremony was occurring in another part of the campus, they could be moved to that location. But the quotes that we have, that our facility supervisors obtained.
Seems long.
Yeah.
How long do they hold then?
They can get very costly, they've been around, some projects where they've been well in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. Get up into the twenty row with wheelchair access and ramping and.
So these hold how many people, ten rows, how long are they?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, probably in the twenty, twenty-five foot range in length.
Talking about people your size?
Six, six people. Six people nights.
There's a shot, there's a shot.
Well, I'm fine with that.
Or Doug's size.
Yeah, Doug would be twelve.
Now, within that, the parking lot site improvement approach, what's the actual total project, because I know you're also have an application going before the CPC?
CPC.
So what's the context of how the parts fit together for a total?
Forty thousand. So what, we're, if you want to.
Or if you want to do that in another part. I'll jump in.
The playground.
I mean, I don't want to take you out of order, if you're gonna be getting it to another part of your budget presentation order, then we'll just stick to your order.
One forty from the CPC.
One forty from the CPC, which, which is the, that number of two hundred and change is after the CPC, if they get that.
Yeah, no, it's in the district, that's what I wanted to know.
We already bonded for the design work.
Right.
Yeah, it's a.
There's a lot of different funding sources, the three towns authorized borrowing of a hundred thousand dollars in FY eighteen.
Right.
Which we're using for the engineering design, plus, well, some of that will be left over to apply to the actual construction. We've got some residual funds from the building project slash sewer project that we have to spend on a very long, you know, a long life project, so the committee's considering.
A like use, it's gotta be a like use.
Yes.
The leftover bond proceeds.
The playground renovation or replacement was, in the original project design, was removed in scope reduction to get the affirmative vote figured.
Is that where we went from seventy-two down to sixty-nine?
Yes, it was, it was one of the items that was, was removed from the original scope.
So the totality of it is what, six hundred?
It's about six hundred thousand, yeah.
And, and the bleachers, is BOSS helping out with that?
They have a little bit, but we were going to work in conjunction with BOSS, because they're interested in putting the bleachers there.
So some of the things around the athletic facility, there's the bleacher piece, there's been discussions about creating a kind of a concession, restroom and athletic equipment storage facility that would be adjacent to the, to the track of our C field, so where the BOSS dollars get.
Allocated.
Allocated, we're not really sure.
But they're, they're part of the overall thing, okay.
And interesting that you bring that up, because our new athletic director, Dave Sanchagrin, has, that was one of his first initiatives, is to reach out to that group, he's having some good discussions about tweaking or refining the whole fundraising around athletics process and how it's being done right now, so he's gathering some input from them, from the coaches, from parents, and so there may be some revisions to how, and kind of boost the booster effort. So hopefully we'll have, it'll be a continuing source for helping us with funding the extras on the athletics side.
We didn't want a sewer line towards that area at all, did we?
Where?
For the restrooms.
Probably not.
No, but it's in that side though, the good news is, it is in that side.
It would be, it would not be difficult to.
To get to, that's good.
Or the regional school.
Yeah, good.
Is the garage also hooked up to the sewer system?
It is.
All right, so all three school buildings and the garage are hooked in, and then anything else, as you come along, you'll decide whether it hooks in or not.
It's all a matter of, if we bring water to that facility, we're.
You're bringing sewer.
Have to connect to the sewer.
With another parallel trench.
Yeah, I don't think we'll be building any more septic fields on the campus.
No.
You've got this.
You're on an aqua for a young man, you shouldn't be building anything. Do you know how fragile that area is right now?
I've heard.
I know you, I saw your letter, you guys sent the letter into DEP, did you get a response from them?
Nothing, ever.
For a million bucks, you should get a letter.
Yeah, a certificate, sticker.
You would think, a gold star.
Gold star, right.
In the timeline that they give.
You know, an attaboy.
You met the deadline.
We did.
Well, we, you know, that was a collective effort.
Randy was working with you guys, he did a good job facilitating it.
No, that was a great example.
Yeah, you'd think you'd get a thank you.
Collaboration.
Yep.
Plenty of strength.
That's right. You don't want me in charge of a civil rights, I'll tell you right now.
So I can take you through the, through our budget summary page, if you want to spend a few minutes looking at that, a lot of it was already addressed by Jen in her, her discussion, but, so if we focus on the expenditure side, because that's really what drives the revenue piece, our general administration budget is up by three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, or thirteen and a half percent. The biggest contributing factor to that is the, our salary reserve line or category, we're in negotiations presently with, we're just started with the teachers bargaining unit, which is by far our largest bargaining unit, so to the extent we don't know what their compensation is going to be effective with the start of the new school year, we're carrying a, what we feel is a reasonable number in our salary reserve line for negotiation. We also have our transportation unit is slated for.
I was gonna ask you Steve, out of your number bargaining units, the total number of bargaining units, how many of them are you under negotiation with that are still open?
Those two, the teachers and.
So two of them are still open?
Correct.
All the others are under contract?
Correct. And there are, if you take the total, the custodians have a unit under the teacher umbrella, the paraprofessionals have a unit under the teacher umbrella, food service workers are on their own, it's a very small one, and transportation.
Clerical?
And clerical, correct, yeah, and they're, they're off on their own as well. So the financial impact when we're carrying something in salary reserve for those other units is generally pretty small. So we're coming off of a year where we had a modest amount parked in salary reserve to a fairly significant amount, because it is the teacher unit. Also in there, the Hammond County retirement assessment, that's something we can't control. We did have good news on the health insurance side, an almost flat number, I think it's going up by one point two percent, which is a far cry from years, some years in the past where the town has experiences, but it can be double-digit increases on a percentage basis, we're looking at one point two percent for next year. And we are continuing to look at ways in which we can protect ourselves from larger increases, looking at options to do plan design change, that's gonna be one of the topics for discussion with the bargaining unit, and we're approaching that from another angle as well. That's, and that, that item's carried under the employee benefit line. Vocational tuition, a significant increase there, but it's basically balanced off by, at the very bottom line of this document, the school choice revolving account for vocational and special education tuition. As Jen mentioned earlier, we had the, we did not have a significant or sufficient amount of E and D money available to us last year, so normally we would be carrying the, all of that, most of that vocational tuition in the operating budget, we had to shift it down outside of the operating budget to our school choice revolving account, so you see, the school choice revolving account, our expenditures out of that fund decreasing by four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, which is directly attributable to the increase on the operating budget side for tuition for our out-of-district location.
And is it Westfield Tech, is that the big cost?
Yeah.
What was, what?
Westfield Tech, as well as.
What do they do on, I mean, you got the collaborative, you got a couple other trade schools, but what did they go up on their price points?
Last year, we, you can speak to it, but it goes up about, we pay about five.
We budgeted about a five percent annual increase in tuition on the vocational tuition, and generally that's enough. For FY nineteen, and it got approved after the budget was passed or approved, Westfield, Westfield VoC got, I want to say like a forty-something percent increase to their tuition. They went from ten eight or ten nine to fifteen thousand dollars. It was outrageous. So while their numbers continue to decline, and so numbers of students leaving the district to attend Westfield VoC, really basically being guided by school commitment policy, those numbers are falling, but that tuition rate increase from one year to the next was a real, a real hit, so in the.
But just that one location?
Yes.
But the other ones didn't go up by forty percent?
No, no. The way the collaborative tuition is assessed to us, it's on a, they utilize a three-year rolling average, and so any of the spikes or dips are kind of leveled out, which is kind of a nice feature to working with them, where you're not subject to dramatic increases from one year to the next. So if we project out our Westfield VoC enrollment, based on the grades that students are in, and how many are going in each year, new students going in, we'll begin to see that number tail off. Whether that's made up by students moving over to the collaborative program, or whether it kind of stabilizes, remains to be seen. There'll be less money going out to the city of Westfield in FY twenty-one, twenty-two, and beyond.
So what is the anticipated increase for next year?
Well, since they took it up to the number that it's at, we're, we budgeted a five percent increase on top of what it went to, yeah.
You're not thinking or carrying, that's gonna be another forty percent.
We're not, we're not.
That would be absorbed, that would be.
Yeah, that would put them probably over the highest in the state, which they shouldn't have those kinds of collaborative costs.
Collaborative, which is our preferred supplier by design with a policy, continues to expand their programs and our machining program, which we only had the Westfield option for, so the goal was to shuffle as many students into that program as possible to.
Start redirecting them to that location.
If they're in there and, until they graduate, but those that haven't got in, they're going to the collaborative as long as the program's up.
So anybody who's in the lower grade that's contemplating those choices of a trade school, you're gonna root them to the collaborative? Is that by policy?
So by policy, so any out-of-district chapter seventy-four application comes to me, I have to look at what program of study that they're interested in in ninth grade. So if it's a program of study that's not offered at C-Tech, then we send a letter to the family and allow them to do the exploratory at Westfield Vocational. However, if in December they do not get into the approved program that we do not offer, so say they want, they want to go into aviation, we don't offer aviation, we approve their application, but in December, if they are not approved, we state in our letter that they have to submit a new chapter seventy-four application for the program in which they were approved in, if it's culinary arts, if it's horticulture, then they have to leave Westfield Technical Academy, and they have to come back and be in the programs that we offer at the C-Tech. So we make it very clear at the beginning, there's not a loophole here, there's this, you can't say I want to get into aviation and then stay for the next three years at Westfield Technical Academy, we make it very clear, if you get accepted into a program that is offered at C-Tech, you are coming back, and we've stuck to that.
It's not always a.
It's not always a.
Oh, I can imagine.
People want what they want.
Really? Holy.
Imagine that.
Must be that gym up there, I don't know.
Yeah, don't have the meeting in the gym.
Yeah, you'll be fine.
One of the nice things about having the collaborative is our chapter seventy-four school choice, is that we're one of the founding districts of the collaborative program, and we have a voice in how their tuition is determined, we have people who sit on the.
What's your weighted vote?
Collaboratives.
People. Same, each town gets a member on each board, so George is on one board and I'm on the other board.
And but their vote is equal.
I'm actually the vice chair on one committee, he's the chairman of the other.
You know, unlike, you know, the members of your regional district, they have weighted votes.
No, it's, you get four.
Versus, we're powerless to weigh in on the Westfield VoC, Westfield Technical Academy tuition, yeah, they negotiate, they work that through the state.
And another, I'm about to get off topic, but in Mass, they just approved a law about vocational schools, and Lower Pioneer Valley actually got exempted, which would have been problematic for us, because we would have had to dissolve the Lower Pioneer Valley Corporation, and then somehow the. and then somehow the member towns would have to deal with all the debt that that corporation takes care of. So we're very fortunate that the state didn't force us to dissolve that.
What is the estimated tuition for CTEC now per student?
One of the things I really love about CTEC is that kids get their academics back at home. So that, like, we had kids in Agewam who were in the health program, and then came back to Agewam and took AP classes and went into nursing programs that they wouldn't have gotten into.
They graduate with their fellow students, they get a Southwick diploma.
Yeah.
I don't know who's shy, I was on Mass Appeal a few weeks ago with Sarah Smith, one of our students, who is the CTEC Student of the Year, and is going to Nationals International Graphics.
Excellent, excellent.
They give us a total number, and they give us an average enrollment. So they take the average, three-year rolling average enrollment, divide that into the total assessment.
Okay, thank you.
Right, right, right. So Voc was a couple grand less for years, and then.
Yeah, it's, it's actually fluctuating. So they've been kind of running neck and neck. Sometimes Westfield Voc is a little higher, Collaborative might go along with them.
Right. My son went there through Westside eight years ago, and I was 10 grand a year there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I got arrested in the superintendent's office in West Springfield, 'cause they wouldn't let him go. They wanted him to go to CTEC in the worst way, but they didn't have electrical.
They didn't have to.
And, well, needless to say, it's a journey I'll never forget. He did go eventually.
You did too.
I did too, yeah. Yeah, actually, yeah, we both went.
Sure, Matt in the gym. Terry was just talking about a new bail bondsman thing.
Yeah.
That's a new trade, too.
Bail bondsman, there you go. Grow my hair long, yeah.
Yeah. So actually, we get into the actual schools, most of our cost centers are actually down, mostly due to retirements, more expensive staff moving on, less costly staff being contemplated to replace them. We'll see on the expenditure side, the $70,000 for first-year lease payment on the equipment we'd be acquiring in year one of our one-to-one program.
Yeah, sorry.
Our debt service for capital improvement project going up by about $65,000, and that's in direct relation to the increased borrowing authorization we've had for the previous two years. One of the things I wanna point out on the revenue side, which has a, you know, rather material impact on, on the, on the town of Southwick, because you're paying for, you know, you have 83, 84% share of that, is the, in FY19, we had a 100, nearly $107,000 credit that was available because of an over-assessment that we made on the school building project debt service, when we were going out for that final bond on that project. We had to hold that in reserve, because we over-assessed the communities, it was based on an estimate. And so that reserve that was available as a credit to the three towns in FY19 is no longer available, so that's having an impact on the increase that you're seeing in your assessment from, from 19 to 20. We're showing a rather significant increase in revenue on the regional transportation reimbursement. For the current year, we're carrying $825,000, based on the governor's budget. We're bumping that number up to $900,000, which we still feel is a conservative number. But by pushing that number too far, we're always at risk that, because we're competing for our share of a finite number at the state along with all the other regional school districts. If we do it more efficiently, we get a smaller piece of the pie. Since that's always our goal, is to run our transportation operation as efficiently as possible, we're always at risk for getting a smaller piece of, of the pie that the state has. So we tend to be conservative in our revenue projections for that. And you can see our restricted surplus, our contribution from E and D to offset the assessments going back up to $550,000 from a, a very low number in FY19 of $115,000.
Excuse me, Steve, when do you, when do you and Jen feel you're gonna hear from the state about the, the Chapter 70 education aid, whether or not there's gonna be any changes in terms of the, the budget process from the state?
The House Ways and Means?
Yeah, the version, the send version, and.
There was a hearing on Friday, that a lot of legislature, legislative representatives, and Tom Scott from the superintendents, they spoke at. You can speak to it, but we usually hear.
Yeah. Well, I think, I mean, if you talk about it, reform to the Chapter 70 funding formula.
Yeah, I mean, we heard about it at the MMA.
Yeah. They're, they're very focused on the legislature, and we were at a legislative luncheon a couple, a few weeks ago. They're, they're very focused on revising the Chapter 70 formula, the foundation budget formula. But we don't, we're not expecting any upside to that, because we're in a hold harmless, they're overfunding us by their current formula. They're overfunding us by two million? No, over $2 million. The areas where they're, they're putting at least.
We don't qualify.
Yeah, they're, they're economically disadvantaged, they're looking at.
Firm and areas.
Fed out-of-district costs, they're looking at employee benefits as a, like, like the town, as a 50-50 contribution between employer and employee toward the health insurance. It's not one of our, it's not the budget killer that it is in some of the other municipalities or school districts where they're paying 70, 80, 90%.
Right.
So although we, we'd love to have more state financial support, based on where their focus is, on tweaking the formula, we're just.
It's gonna kill us.
Yes.
Based on.
Might even get worse.
Our takeaway from the MMA, my takeaway from MMA was.
You're gonna lose local aid money?
They're holding us harmless to $2 million, that, that's gone, 'cause they're gonna, the pile of money is finite. So you can redo the formula, and it's just gonna move buckets of money around, and it's gonna help Chelsea, and it's gonna murder anything west rural. It'll help Chelsea and Springfield and Boston and kill anyone else. Yeah, absolutely, that's how it's gonna go.
This district has been supporting this rural schools initiative, which has been led by.
Michael De Conti, he spoke yesterday.
So, and we're trying to advocate our voice.
Sure.
Because our disadvantages geographically are widespread, and it's cost money to get the kids to the district, so.
Yeah, and, and, you know, areas of the state are seeing enrollment decline, sometimes very precipitous, sometimes it's slow and gradual, like what we're seeing here. It's not always easier within the cards to respond to that through, oh, you know, you lost 10 kids this year, cut, cut teaching staff, or a half a teacher. Those are, those are challenges in responding to that. So if we, if the rural schools initiative moves through, there's some significant financial assistance available for, for communities that qualify. And so far, this regional school district is in the discussion. We've got some money this year, a small amount. The plans are, under the formulas that they have, it would be a significant amount. So that may be.
Not 2 million.
No, no, not a big.
Do you, do you have the buy-in from our state representative, state senator advocating on that?
Meeting with Representative Boldego Monday morning at 9:00.
Will you be sharing with him that you met with us today, and that we're.
And that you asked him?
And that, yes, and that we wanna see the results of that effort come to fruition?
And you might mention we rent office space to him, and that rent could go up dramatically.
Like $2 million.
Right. So he has the choice to make.
An elevator could be broken.
Door could be locked.
Yeah.
We, we did mention it to the Senator Humison and the other delegates that were sitting with us. They heard it from a lot of folks in the room a few weeks ago. Soon to be mayor.
Yes.
Yes. We'll lose that.
Yeah. But he can get that through the budget process before it goes on to that.
Yeah. Because on the, on the enrollment side, I mean, you're seeing it, we're, we've been the stabilizing factor to your enrollment, even though it's gone down a little. Look at Granville and especially Talon, 17%.
17%.
What ties into that, though, is what, what do you anticipate from these new subdivisions that are going in? Have you guys looked at that yet?
We have, in a sense, we looked at it. Right now, we can accommodate them in our buildings. So we, the type of homes that they're building, we should see an increase in student enrollment in Southwick. However, that's going to impact your assessment portion of the minimum local contribution with the state, so.
The municipal revenue growth factor?
Yeah. In your percentage of, it's 84% now.
If you, just if you continue to see growth, or if we start to see growth in, in Southwick, and we see continued decline in enrollment in Granville and Talon, then Southwick's percentage share of whatever the assessment.
Goes up.
Goes up, so. It went up by a half a percent, or it's going, it's going up by a half a percent from FY19 to FY20. Of the amount of money that we assess to the, to the three communities, it, it meant a swing of like $55,000 from Granville and Talon being shifted over to Southwick, just based on their decline in enrollment. And we utilize, so I, I've probably mentioned this before, but for determining the operating budget assessments, not the capital piece, 'cause that gets fixed for a five-year period, every five years, but on the operating budget side, the assessment is based on a rolling five-year average of student enrollment among the, among the three, three communities. So as they decline, as the other two towns decline, or if they continue to, it'll shift a higher percentage of the assessment to, to Southwick.
So being over, you have to run a dating service.
I guess so. I'm still not allowed to go up there.
Yeah, I think you're still.
The food van, you can be, the food van could be.
I guess if I brought food, they'd let me across the border.
Settlements, we could put some immigrants at a.
So those are some, I think, some of the, the more significant items, the highlights. And we're happy to respond to any, any questions, any additional questions we might have, particular categories or problems.
Give the speech, Russ.
No, no, I.
I would say, one last thing I would point out is, is overall, we look at all of our spending, the operating budget, which is, which is based on appropriation and assessment to our, our grant funding, and what we're spending out of our federal and state grants, out of our revolving accounts. From FY19 to FY20, going up by about $390,000, which represents a 1.47%. How that money gets apportioned out to the, to the, to the communities, you know, varies depending on where, where you're at in terms of which town you're at, which town you're in. But we feel like, from an overall spending standpoint, it's fairly, fairly modest increase.
And did you wanna explain the minimum local contribution? It looks like it's gonna go up this year.
Yeah, I mean, the minimum local contribution for Southwick that we set, based on when, what we had available for numbers during the FY19 budget approval process versus where it's going to in FY20, based on what we have from the state so far, the governor's proposed budget, which is what we always rolled. That's going up by $370,000. If you look at the materials distributed by the state, the increase is about $42,000 less, because they're basing it on what the final state-approved budget was, was approved at, where they raised during that, a couple months from the time that we approved the budget to when the state finally approved the budget, there was a $42,000 bump to minimum local contribution. So you're not paying that this year, but that's getting incorporated or made up in, in FY20. So what, what looks like a $320-something thousand dollar increase on the state's budget documents, in reality, it's a $370,000 increase, because that increased.
They increased it last year, they didn't come back.
They increased it after our budget approval process.
How much do you have in your stabilization fund? I don't see, I don't see an entry, an in and out, what is the actual balance?
We carry about $100,000 there. It's kind of a real emergency, you know, it's kind of falling, have something to, something to tell. Some amount of that, not, not a significant amount, but some amount of that was used, I wanna say about six or seven years ago. Maybe a $50,000 contribution or something. So.
Just a couple of quick notes. We'll be having our annual review of the town buildings in vacation week in April. That's something we made a commitment to the taxpayers, we would do annually. And I think it has helped, you know, we did a little brainstorm, and that's where the placcape idea came up, with the, it was in community preservation funds. And I think the first year we were there, we, we noticed the vents getting blocked, and so it pays off. It pays off. So it's, it's, I think it's good for the town, good for the school, too. And Steve, Randy Brown, myself are still having conversations about the safe routes to school. I know Jen's not a, had some bad experience, but.
I just keep the cautious hat on.
All right. But I did reach out to Chief Bishop, who received a grant, and he said he would work with us, you know, to help, you know, get police officers there to help if we do go down that road with some of the training exercises that need to be done.
And it's not on Steve and myself, the safe routes to school, it's something we're gonna be putting onto the building for example.
Right, right.
Implementation wise, yeah.
Right, right.
So we, Steve spoke to me about the meeting, and we're gonna be bringing up at our next, next district admin meeting.
Yeah.
For the Woodland and the Powdermill Principal.
Okay.
We're on board.
Right, and.
Just put on your cautious hat.
And Jeff, I'm sure will go back to the school committee and express what we're trying to achieve here, 'cause that would be great, if we could get monies to do Powdermill and Depot and connect everything to the rail trail, and, and so kids could, for sporting events, get to Wally Park or wherever. So it would be safer for our students, not just Southwick students, but Granville and Talon students. And of course, they might be walking to some living classroom, you know, so the sidewalks, sidewalks would be nice for that, too, wouldn't it?
It would be.
Big drones.
Just pick the kid up and bring him with the drone, too.
Yeah, that'll be the safe route to the living classroom, I guess. It's a hell of a sidewalk.
So I, I.
Absolutely.
No, we'll use drones again.
I think I've said enough, and this is very good, very good.
Are you moving forward, and, and, we've talked in the past, the police department and the camera system, are you guys having conversations?
We are just waiting for, to hear from the chief on the MOU. We have it approved by our attorney. We are all set.
You're waiting for the chief of police to approve it?
No, no. Well, the select ward to.
The chief, our chief of police is having town council review.
Oh, good, okay.
Yes, we're all set.
So I can say he's slacking.
No, he's not, he is not.
Sure? Little bit? Nothing? A little shot? No?
Joseph, they're moving along to the way they should.
Just checking.
Yeah.
Joseph. Back in summer school.
Yes, you are.
I didn't mention middle school, this summer school.
Yeah. When does the school committee finalize the budget and accept the budget?
First Tuesday in April.
First Tuesday in April.
That's the second.
That's April 2nd.
April 2nd, after April Fool's Day.
Right.
It'll be before form to do it on that day.
War and articles of this, but, but we would always extend an, you know, an extension for them anyway.
Okay.
So no pressure, because it's today.
Anything else?
March 23rd, we can, we can do it.
All right, our doors are always open, so come in, talk, we're there. So we try and be, give you as much information as we can as soon as we get it. be, give you as much information as we can as soon as we get it.
And we now know that Wes Springfield knows how to handle Mr. Didi if he becomes a problem at your school.
Literally.
Just turn the cameras on.
Literally. Yeah, there was no cameras. There was a woman superintendent, too. Oh, she's tough. Needless to say, I didn't win, but I did in the end, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Your support.
I'd like to make a motion for the select board to adjourn.
Yeah, that's fine. Second. And the time? Read the time.
Aye, we're adjourning at 11:50 AM.